All right.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Residents. Hey, good evening, Ron. And also, department heads.
How's it going, Mayor?
Good evening, everyone. Happy Monday.
Happy Monday. Waiting on some trustees so that we can have a quorum and we can begin our meeting. I see trustee Brown, trustee Steve, trustee Norwood, more and trustee Holmes. Okay, we now have a quorum. Today, I would like to call the order, the committee of the whole virtual town hall meeting, live stream on YouTube, Monday, October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. The time is six thirty P M.
Six thirty-one.
Six thirty-one. If you could, call, call the row, Clark Key.
Sure. Trustee Holmes? You're on mute, sir.
Here.
Thank you. Trustee Norwood?
Yeah.
Trustee Steve?
Present.
Trustee Belcher? I don't see her. Trustee House?
Present.
Trustee Brown?
Present.
We have a quorum there.
All right. Next, if everyone will stand for the pleasure allegiance. Allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America. Republic, which is one nation, God.
One liberty.
And justice.
Okay, next, we have prayer. Trustee Norwood, would you leave us in prayer?
Sure.
Okay.
Lord, we come here to you today as a board, asking you to guide us, helping us make the best decisions on behalf of the residents. We want to bless everyone that didn't, just on this call with us today. We thank you in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Mayor, I see Belcher, trustee Belcher has arrived.
All right, what time is it? Six thirty-three?
It is six thirty-three.
All right. Okay, next on the agenda, general announcements. Do any board member have any general announcements? No?
Yes, I have an announcement.
Go ahead.
We had a successful team with the trustees this past month. It was dealing with health and wellness. It was very well, good information. Siddiq Muhammad was there. Of course, he gives us great information about health and wellness and how to protect himself and say help me during this time of COVID. Trustee Brown, don't you have something coming up with the Halloween? You could, you can go into it.
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. We have a, the trustees have a pumpkin decorating contest coming up this Saturday. It's from noon until two P M. It says the Soul Genius Construction Training Center, one forty-seventy-six Lincoln Avenue. And for the best three pumpkins that are chosen, we will have prizes. So, this Saturday, noon until two P M, the trustees have a pumpkin decorating contest. So, everyone is invited. We hope to see you all. Thanks.
Okay, any more announcements? All right. Next, going into what are business? So, letter A, discussion of possible action regarding Resolution Twenty-One related to the Old Village Hall being designated as a historic landmark and applying with the State of Illinois Historic Preservation Division. So, our place is on the agenda because I wanted to basically uplift the community and show some of the treasures that Dalton truly has. Our Old Village Hall is currently vacant, and I would love the fact of going out to grant money so we can make it into a museum. And then I'm a combine B as well, museum or a historic landmark. So, I wanted to get you guys' opinion as it relates to, would you like, how do you feel about that? I know a lot of residents do go there and they watch the trains as they go back and forth. So, I want to initiate that and hear what the board trustees feel about. Any discussion?
I think it's a great idea. I think we brought it up some time ago. Was it last year? We talked about that being landmark status. So, I think it's a wonderful idea.
All right. Anyone else?
Mayor, can I be recognized?
Go ahead, trustee.
Okay, so if it does, if we move forward with this, what is the status of the current tennis that's in there? How does that?
Well, it wouldn't be that portion of the building. The, the, the building is divided. So, there at the lower part and then the upper part will be the museum.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, so, are you guys in favor of moving forward so I can have attorneys draw something up so we can go out the grant money so we can convert it into a historical landmark and also a museum? Clark Key, can you call the row for approval to move forward?
Sure. Trustee Steve?
Yes, I'm okay, move forward.
Trustee Norwood?
I like the idea of moving forward.
Trustee Belcher?
Yes.
Trustee Holmes?
Yeah, going on there.
All right, let's move forward.
Trustee Brown?
Hi.
And trustee House?
Yes.
Motion pass.
All right. Next on the agenda is discussion of possible action regarding the media equipment. Mister Ontario, you are up. I did go downstairs in the media center and we have outdated equipment. And right now, we're just trying to bring everything up to par so we can do things throughout our town. I'm gonna let Ontario speak to what is needed. Ontario, you are on.
Hello, everyone. The equipment that I submitted a request for is newer cameras, updated equipment to film and get the Channel Four station back online. There are multiple, multiple cameras that were unfortunately, they kind of dated. And then some of the lenses are, have nicks in them. And this is not appropriate gear to film for. I have a lot of plans for the Channel Four Department to get the department back online, start media department, excuse me, start different shows for the, the, the community, to entertain the community, to inform the community, and to report on the, on the schools and things of that nature.
Thank you, Ontario. Do anyone have any questions as it relates to?
We were talking about cameras only. What type of equipment are we talking about purchasing?
We're talking about new Sony N X one hundreds. Those are studio-based cameras. I'm looking to get equipment, new drone equipment, new software, like a teleprompter for the, the lab, that was, excuse me, for the media center, things of that nature. I have provided a detailed list of all the equipment that I've requested.
Is there a cost attached with it, the detail that you have?
There is a cost attached with it, and these funds are apparently pre-allocated for the media department. So, I took, presented the fee as the approved budget to address those.
Okay, I can't hear you. You said something about funds were allocated for that already?
Yeah.
Approved budget, the approved budget. I, I took funds out of the approved budget for the media center to update the equipment.
Okay, do you know how much that was or you don't know? Do anybody?
Ninety-two hundred dollars.
Ontario, you're breaking up, but trustee Brown is in your package. He got a whole package for what he wants to purchase.
No, I was saying, so the approved budget, we had allocated, how much?
About nine thousand in there, trustee.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, am I breaking up? I'm sorry.
Got you.
Quick, quick question. Right now, the trustee's attorney has been kicked out. Can we let him back in?
Nobody kicked nobody out?
He's, he's not, he's not in. He said the host has kicked him out. So, can we let him back in?
Okay, well, please don't start because no one kicked anybody out. But if he got disconnected, just say that, and he can get back in. So, and then also, just for further record, y'all don't need an attorney for COW meetings. It's a COW Committee of the Hoes discussion. So, I don't want it to be a show, just so you're aware of that. But moving on. Um, okay, so what, what do you guys want to do with this item? My item C D?
Can I be recognized?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, is Chris on here? Or somebody from the spirit?
Speaking, trustee.
Hi, Chris. Do you have the line item for the media in the budget? Do you have a line, line item number?
The line item for new equipment on the media is oh-one-fourteen-eight-thirty.
Okay, eight-thirty?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, they have one question because I wanted to get, I know there was a lot of things in there. I thought, I looked at the same line item and that was like eight thousand dollars. So, the amount that we're spending will be less than eight thousand. Am I understanding that correct?
No, the, it will be more than the eight thousand, actually. And I spoke to the accountant and we can readjust some of the thirty thousand and reallocate it for new line items to amend, to get the updated equipment that the village needs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
May, may I now be recognized?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I have a question. What, what, can you give me that total amount? I know we have two different amounts for two sets of cameras. So, can you give me that total amount in regards to these cameras? What was the estimate?
The total, the total amount that's in the package is eight thousand seven hundred twenty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents within everyone's package.
Got it, ma'am. I know we have two, so I was just wondering. Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions? All right. Can you call the row, Clark Key, as it relates to approval for Ontario to purchase media equipment?
Motion to move forward, trustee Steve?
Wait, is this the move forward to the voting?
Okay, one second, trustee. And you can, you asked to be acknowledged. But yes, it's the move forward to the next meeting. If everybody agree, we put it on the agenda for November first board meeting.
Okay, mayor, can I be acknowledged? Because your statement was for him to purchase it. So, that's why I wanted to clear that this is just consensus for it to go to the voting meeting, correct?
It is, is consensus to go to the next board meeting, which is the first Monday of November for approval. So, once you guys agree here, you're basically agreeing that you're, you're saying that he can move forward. Next board, take an actual vote? Hold on, you asked, I'm clearing it up. Next board meeting, we take a vote and you guys say yes or no. But this is what this is. This is saying that you agree for him to move forward to the next agenda. So, can you call the row, Clark Key?
Okay, this is a motion to move forward for obtaining the media equipment. Trustee Steve?
As is clear, we will move, I'm, I'm understanding we're moving to the next agenda. As long as the money's there and the money's in the budget and we budgeted for it, I'm okay with it.
Okay, is that a yes?
It's going to the next voting, yes.
Yeah, okay. Trustee Norwood?
Um, yes, I'm okay with it moving to, to, to the next meeting.
Trustee Belcher?
Yes.
Trustee Holmes?
Hi.
Trustee Brown?
Hi.
And trustee House?
Yes.
Motion passed to move forward.
Okay, next, we have discussion of possible action regarding review of three quotes of vendors regarding the mold removal from Firehouse Two. As you guys know, that Firehouse Two has been closed and they have been repairs over there. Currently, we at the stage of removing the mold. So, I will give this to Chief McCain so he can. Is Chief McCain on here? Let's see. Dorothy?
He was in the back office. Ontario, can you please let him in? That's Chief iPad.
Okay, well, while we waiting on him, you guys received three quotes as relates to fixing up Station Two. I don't know if you guys reviewed them. Basically, it's open discussion to see which company you would like to go with so we can repair it and make them whole and have the fire department reopen. Do anybody have any question as it relates to the quotes? Or did anybody decide on a company they would like to use?
I would like to say two things. Again, our attorney's not letting, he's not in no more. Second thing, this can be, this, this fire, we had a fire committee meeting. A lot of this stuff can be moved to a committee meeting that can be discussed and linked and put up more, more time than versus the agenda and we got twenty-six thousand things. So, I, I, I'm okay with what I'm looking at, but stuff like this can be moved to the fire committee, which is actually trustee, trustee Belcher's over the fire committee. We can discuss this to the fire committee instead on a board meeting because it's going to drag it out and you see all the stuff that we have on it today.
So, things come up on this agenda, meaning the COW Committee at Ho, because you guys do take forever to have committee meetings. So, by you take a forever to have a meeting, they put it on here because they're strapped for time. So, it's on here for a discussion. It's six bodies, which is six trustees to discuss it instead of three. And if you guys wanted to do anything, anybody could communicate with the department here or myself to get that structured. Currently now, you don't have that type of structure. That's why it's here on the COW so we can discuss it all together and move forward. I don't want to keep coming to a meeting and we keep having to pull something off because you guys want it in a committee meeting. And we here discuss it, let's move forward. Then we got two weeks to get all the kinks out before it comes to a voting meeting for approval. So, all I'm asking is, we need to move forward, getting the mold removed out of that location. Is the vote in favor of getting it removed or you guys want to wait?
I, I am in complete disagreement. That's why you have trustee, we just had, Kiana Belcher, when was your last fire committee meeting?
September twenty-eighth, and it was not on there. And I did speak to the fire chief Pete in reference to this going to the committee meeting because this was not something that was brought up on the committee last meeting. He was okay with it, so I was actually waiting for him to get on because my motion would have been to table this to the fire committee.
Okay, do you have a date when you're gonna have a fire committee meeting?
It'll be the last, it'll be the last Tuesday of the month, mayor. It's the day before the finance.
The last, you said the last what?
Tuesday.
Last Tuesday?
Yes, gotta be the standing meeting last Tuesday of each month.
Okay, right, you just started having committee meetings. So, I don't want anybody to think that we're not trying to put anything on agenda. You just had one and we've been in office for, for months. So, when we put this on here, maybe they didn't have everything together. So, I do want everybody to understand that. If they don't have the proposals right at the time of when you guys asked, they have, you have to get them timed to get it. Once they get it, then they put it on their agenda. That's all this is. But Pete, I see your face. I saw you on here. Where are you, Pete? All right.
Right here, yes.
The floor is yours, sir.
I'm sorry, I just got on, so I apologize. I had technical difficulties and I was able just to get in, so I apologize. Where are we at, Madam Mayor? I apologize.
Are we talking about letter D as relates to mold removal?
Okay, thank you. So, since the, the last meeting, we have gotten four different quotes as far as getting the mold removal out of Fire Station Number Two. We waited to get the rust fix, which obviously I think everyone, as far as being a part of getting that taken care of, and now we're at the point where I got four different quotes. And I have to obviously go with a quote that meets the funding that's available in the budget as well. So, so the four different quotes that I passed on to Administrator Brown fall within, there's rescue cleaning and fire restoration. There's a minimum cost for four thousand up to a pure clean disaster service, which is almost twenty-six thousand dollars. So, at the end of the day, obviously, I'm gonna, would like to recommend a company after we review everything thoroughly at the next meeting. But this obviously needs to get done sooner than later before we get Station Two open. And I'm gonna also talk with Scott Gilmore as far as reviewing the information as well since he oversees buildings in the village. But at the end of the day, we're gonna meet the money that are allotted in the budget and that allow us to mitigate the incident, make sure the building is safe for our firemen to operate out of. Any questions?
This is trustee Belcher.
Yes.
Um, this, I, I know you just said that you just got on, but I would like this to go to a fire committee meeting, which we had the discussion about.
Okay. When, uh, I'm sorry, when is the meeting gonna be? I'm sorry.
It's the last Tuesday of the month. I'll give you the exact date.
All right, ma'am. All right, thank you.
Okay, and then just for the record, you know, just for the record for everyone, the ordinance states that it's supposed to get vetted through the COW meeting and then go to a regular board meeting. So, I'm following the ordinance that we all voted on in the past that say this is the structure. The structure is to put an item on the COW, which we're doing, talk about it, discuss it, come up with solutions or agreement, and then move forward to the actual voting meeting. That's what we're doing now. So, when you guys sit here and say, let's move it to a committee of the whole or wait, we here now and you could discuss it and make a decision, we're not holding anything or anyone up. It's like we're stopping progress because everybody want to put something under their committee. So, just for the record, the actual ordinance states it get vetted through COW, which we're doing now here, and then it goes to the voting meeting. That's for the record. Okay, so, can you call the row as it relates to what needs to be done? If they want to move forward, we're getting the mold removed or not?
Okay, um, this is a motion to move forward with removal of the mold from Fire Station to, to the next board meeting, regular board meeting, November the first. Trustee Steve?
From what I'm understanding, we're supposed to move, take this to committee, to the fire committee.
There wasn't a second. Okay. Okay. It wasn't a second, so it was nothing to motion up. It was just, she said she wants to move it somewhere, no one seconded. So, now I'm saying, let's get the mold fixed. We're here, we got two weeks later to vote for it.
Do you need a second to move it to a committee? If this is, do, do we need a second to move this to committee?
Yes. If, if you're trying to table, you're tabling it to a committee.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I'm not, I'm just saying, let's move it to committee.
Right. So, she, okay, so I'm trying to tell you, try explaining to you. So, if Kiana saying that she wants to motion it to her committee, someone has to second it. Then we call the row, like we're doing now, to move to the next meeting, we call the row. And then you guys either agree or you disagree. Same concept.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Go ahead, trustee.
Clarity, like, I don't think, none of the items on here, we just have been doing discussion. So, nothing's been motioned or seconded. There wasn't a motion to, for the initial discussion nor a second on any of that. So, if we're, so I guess maybe I need clarity then on what the format is because A, B, C, D, none of those have had motions or seconds.
Correct.
The intention that trustee Belcher expressed was to move it to committee, which I'm in agreement with. So, um, so, I mean, we can, I guess we would say no then to the question.
Okay, so you have the motion to move it into committee. So, who, who want to make the motion? So, trustee Belcher want to make the motion and House, you want to second it? You can do that and y'all can move it to committee. So, would you like?
I'll make the motion to have it go to the fire committee.
Finance committee, okay.
Fire committee meeting.
Okay, fire committee, and any, that's it.
Say it.
All right, can you call the row? Clark Key?
Trustee Steve?
Hi.
Trustee Norwood?
Hi.
Trustee Belcher?
Hi.
Trustee Holmes?
Hi.
Trustee Brown?
Hi.
And trustee House?
Hi.
Mayor, before we move forward, can we do all of these correctly? Because the other ones, we did not do a, a motion in a second.
It's not, I just, I just explained it. So, again, for the second time, if you trying to table something, you have to call a motion to table it into the committee. All we did for the other items is agree that they want to move forward with the process and it goes to the next agenda for a vote.
I just want to be clear for the record. So, we're tabling this to the next COW committee meeting. Is that what the motion is?
For fire, yes.
Okay, got it.
Again, I want to make it known that our attorney is not being let in on. Could y'all let him in? Whoever's the host, Ontario or whoever's the host? Could y'all let Mike McGrath or Sean McGrath in, please?
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is.
I'm sorry, what is the name, trustee?
Mike McGrath or Sean McGrath?
Mike McGrath.
Okay, all right. Thank you, moving on, and y'all can text each other for that. Next is discussing that possible action regarding the fire department, fire engineer, and fire lieutenant promotions. Chief McCain, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, mayor. The, currently, the fire department, we have three vacancies in the lieutenant position and we have two vacancies in the engineer position. And at the next board meeting, with the consent and approval of the board, we would like to move forward with the formal positions to be ratified with the promotions off the fire promotion lieutenant's list and the fire engineer promotion list as well. So, that is what I was bringing to the board this evening in regards to that. As we move forward to the next meeting, the vacancies are there, the positions are in the budget that Chris and put together with the mayor and the board approved. And the engineer positions are very important, especially with the fact that we have one member that's currently, that has left the department. He has moved on to another department out in the western suburbs and we are hoping to replace that engineer position. And I have two members that are temporarily acting up into the position of engineer and their one hundred and twenty days acting capacity is gonna be coming to an end next month. So, it's very important that we formally promote those individuals to reduce any potential overtime or any potential back pay issues that may come out of this between the engineer and lieutenant positions. Any questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, I have one. Trustee Holmes, recognize?
Go ahead, trustee.
Yeah, yeah, chief, are, are, are you hiring from the list that you already have? The list was put together and needed a sign-in date of August second. So, we already went through the entire process with the police and, I'm sorry, with the police fire commission as of August second. And we went through cops and fire testing, which was the agency. All the, all the portions of the testing from the third party were completed. The ten-day wait cycle as far as any individuals that had any military points that had to be put in concluded on August the second. So, we are looking to utilize a promotional list for fire lieutenant and fire engineer that was formulated on August the second, twenty twenty-one. Okay, thank you, chief. I'm just, just promoting that we, when we do as usual, try to look at some of our females. But thank you, chief. Yes, sir.
All right, any more questions?
Yes. Again, I'm, and maybe I'm gonna sound like a broken record, but this can go to the fire committee. All this fire stuff can go through the fire committee. And we can wait, we can, we can, this move, move everything, whatever fire, to the fire committee. And when she has.
Trustee Steve, we actually discussed this in the fire meeting.
I just want to say that. Thank you for clarity.
Thanks.
So, um, moving on.
Do we take a vote on this to move forward?
Yeah, I'll finally give you that now. Yeah, basically, just so we clear, move forward to the next voting meeting, which is in November. That's what it is without a motion, just basically, everybody agrees to move on next agenda for.
Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Steve?
Hi.
Trustee Norwood?
Hi.
Trustee Belcher?
Hi.
Trustee Holmes?
Hi.
Trustee Brown?
Hi.
And trustee House?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Okay, so, one thing I want to pause and do because I keep forgetting to do it is to announce that if anybody have any questions, meaning residents that's onlookers, please send your. please send your questions to communications@vodown.org. Again, that is communications@vodown.org. When you send those, uh, questions, we will read them into record. You have until seven thirty to do something. So again, that website or email is communications@vodown.org. Okay, next on the agenda is discussion and possible action regarding security cameras for village hall. Um, everybody know I'm huge on security, so we need security here at village hall as well. And I want to give the floor to Scott so he can explain what's going on. Scott, you got the floor. Is Scott here? Do, um, Dorothy?
He's here earlier.
I know, I'm seeing him.
Let me see if he got knocked out.
I see him now.
Mayor, while we waiting on him, can I, um, be recognized for a second? Uh, I guess, I guess, uh, Mike is still not in.
Well, the, the, I can't see everybody, like, I don't even see Scott. So I don't even see who you talking about. Because I saw him earlier on here.
Scott's audio seems to be connecting.
Yeah.
I can't.
So let me see, Ontario, what's going on with everybody? Everybody have hard time getting in and out?
Well, I'm looking at the list. There are names on here. Um, I've submitted to, uh, trustee Steve, the list of people to see which one is his attorney. There are two phone numbers I'm not aware of. Um, I haven't gotten a reply to that. I've also sent that message to, um, Ms. Brown. So I did submit it. Um, there are people on here, Ron Martin, Blatty, Deb Gray, Daniel Franklin, Brett's iPhone and two phones that I don't want to disclose.
Okay, well, y'all, y'all get it together. Okay, well, thanks for being transparent. I just wanted them to know that it's not us. So, y'all.
Mayor, so in the meantime, um, what is it that he need so that he, so that he can get on? Has he said he need a phone number? How do, how do we?
Well, he just, he just text, um, Ed Steves and he asked him which number is here. So he needs to just respond to Ontario. So whichever number the attorney calling from, we wouldn't know. You have to submit it to him so he can let him in.
Or he can just re-click the link and then I'll let him in.
Either or. But while they're doing that, let's keep going because we got a long lead, so I'm not trying.
That is not on here as well.
I just want to. Okay, so we gonna skip it to Scott get on. So we'll skip F and G. We'll move on to H. So discussion and possible action regarding, uh, related strategies for getting past due water bills. What, E. Browns?
I am here.
Go ahead.
Okay, so good afternoon, good evening, everyone. Uh, I was asked, I was attending the finance committee meeting a few weeks ago and, um, one of the things that we discussed was the fact that the water bills are very high and they're past due. And, um, there was some discussions by the trustees about, you know, the fact that we have not commenced shut-off. Um, why don't we have some payment plans or some way to make sure that we are collecting the water bills? And I indicated that I would, uh, look at, um, some payment strategy, some collection and payment strategies. And so I thought about a, a program that I used to do when I worked with the court and, uh, decided that I would propose this program to the village. Uh, right now, um, as you all know, and you're seeing your samplers that I sent you, we have over five thousand, uh, customers, um, five thousand nine hundred eighteen accounts. Of those, uh, six hundred eighty-two thousand is current and three point nine million is over sixty days old. Um, so a total of four point five million over sixty, four point five million, uh, accounts. Now, this actually, uh, also just to give you some idea about how many people that we're talking about here, how many accounts that we're talking about here. Uh, we're talking probably over two thousand, uh, or more that are actually, um, over sixty. We have, I went through and actually looked at the accounts, uh, sixty, from sixty-one to a hundred and twenty days. Uh, we have two thousand three hundred and ninety-one residents and a hundred and four are non-residents that have bills that are due, that are past due and is sixty-one to a hundred and twenty days old. Um, and I'm just gonna move down to seven hundred and twenty-one to, um, uh, no, I'll move down to over a thousand days old, almost three, three years old. You know, seven hundred and nineteen residents and twenty-three non-residents that have bills that are over a thousand days old. Now, the dollar amount for over a thousand days old is also for residents, one point one million, for non-residents, three hundred and forty-six thousand. That's a, we have a lot of money that's outstanding. Now, just so that you all know why I'm referencing over sixty days old is the reason why I'm referencing that is because when it's over sixty days old, it becomes delinquent and the ordinance says that it qualifies for shut-off. So in actuality, uh, we actually could have over two thousand, um, residents that could qualify for shut-offs. Um, and probably over a hundred non-residents that could qualify for shut-off. Now, I know we don't want to do mass shut-off. So we came up, I came up with a proposal that I would like to present to you tonight. And that is to consider an amnesty program. Now, what an amnesty program would do for us, it would permit individuals that are past due to pay their bill without having to pay the penalty. Now, the city of Chicago embraces this periodically as well. They run amnesty programs for, let's say, they'll go for two weeks. I'm suggesting that we could do thirty days, a thirty-day amnesty program. And we would ask people to either come in, pay your bill in full, or set up a payment plan with us. But the payment plan would be auto debit. We do not want people to say, okay, I'll set up a payment plan with you, but, you know, then we don't get their check. So we already know that our, our old system, Lotus, and the one that we're putting in civic system, actually will accept automatic debits to bank accounts, credit cards, et cetera. If you look at the, uh, resolution that I have, I actually kind of, I lay out, um, the number of payments that we would permit individuals to make based upon what they owe. So the residents, that number of payments go from two monthly payments to twelve monthly payments. For non-residents, go from three monthly payments to nine monthly payments. So it gives the residents a little more time to pay. Now, if a person, if a resident or a non-resident refuses to come in to pay, uh, in full or refuses to set up a payment plan with us, which can go as long as twelve months, depending on how much they owe. So the number of months increases based upon how much they owe. If they refuse to do one of those things, which I think is very, uh, would be very, uh, uh, good for the residents and non-residents, then we would send it to the collection agency. One thing that I found that we have not been doing is sending our water bills to the collection agency. So I talked to the collection agency gentleman and I asked them, if we sent a massive number of, 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 of bills to you, uh, to collect all at once, since we haven't been sending them to you, uh, often, could you handle that kind of, um, influx? And he indicated that he could handle whatever we sent to him. So we, it would go through the collection agency. Once it went to the collection agency, we would give residents six months to pay in full, on non-residents, three months to pay in full. And if they don't pay in full by then, they will give them a sixty-day notice shut-off. Now, I, oh, can someone, Richard Watson, can you mute yourself, please? I, I believe that giving people all of these opportunities and then finally, uh, saying, okay, now you're gonna get a sixty-day shut-off because you didn't even pay the collection agency, um, would be more than fair. And I calculated that no one would get shut-off before, at the earliest, any, any resident would get shut-off would be like next July. The earliest a, a non-resident would get shut-off could possibly be April and maybe even as late as May. Now, let's say that someone, actually, I thought about the fact that someone may get in a payment plan, but then they default on that payment plan or do not pay in full during that two, three, six or twelve months. What do we do with them? We would send them to the same collection agency, give them the six months for residents, three months for individual, for non-residents. And if they do not pay, give them a sixty-day notice for shut-off. And then I thought about, what about those that are current, that are current now, but may go into, um, uh, lateness later and miss the amnesty program? Well, for those, we would send them to the collection agency and give them, uh, an opportunity to have the six months to pay if you're a resident, three months to pay if you're a non-resident, and then you get a sixty-day shut-off. Everything leading eventually to shut-off because I think what has happened in the past is that we just did not have a finite, uh, 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 time at which people, uh, really would go into shut-off. And, and so, um, we would do that. And then I know that some people, and they may not have a bank account, they may not have a credit card. So they may need a special payment plan that will be monitored by the village administrator. So I, so I put an option in there for someone to, to, um, get a special payment plan set up. Or they may need a little, uh, longer or a different kind of, um, uh, plan. So we put that in there. And then finally, I put in there that in the future, that, um, uh, a village administrator and staff would be in a position to periodically come to the board and say, let's do an amnesty program. I did an annual amnesty program at the clerk of the court for our traffic tickets and people really came in. I think this would be a great way for us to increase the revenue and people really took advantage of that, um, that amnesty program. So this is what, uh, I am proposing to, to the board to help us collect the, um, three point nine million that we have in overdue, uh, bills. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
May I be recognized? This is trustee Brown.
Sure, go ahead, trustee.
So why did we stop sending the, uh, past due bills to the collection agency?
That had to have been a decision made before I got here, so there's no real explanation. I, and, and to be honest with you, uh, trustee, I think the issue is that there just was not a formalized process by which, um, that, that we were following. So what I would propose is to set up a formalized process and to ensure that it doesn't just, you know, we don't just get things together now, but we document, you know, policies and procedures are so important that we document exactly when, uh, things would go to the, to the collection agency. And make sure that whoever is, um, when we get our finance director, that's probably very important, uh, that, that they work along with the water, uh, department manager to ensure that we on a consistent basis, after that sixty days, that it goes to the collection agency for collection directly or through the Illinois debt, you know, debt recovery, uh, plan.
Okay, I have another question. So if they enter into the program and they don't make their, say, monthly payments or whatever, um, is it that, when you talk about the monthly, the, let, let me ask a question. Let me go back. So say you have an outstanding overdue bill of five hundred dollars. You're gonna break that down into, you said six months, or what are you gonna give?
If you look at page two of the resolution.
Mm-hmm.
Page two of the resolution.
Okay.
For residents, I say two monthly payments if you owe a hundred dollars up to five hundred dollars. Okay? Um, three monthly payments if you owe five oh one to a thousand. Six monthly payments if you owe a thousand to two thousand. A nine monthly payments is two thousand to five thousand and twelve monthly payments for five thousand and up. So up to twelve months, that's it. Now, for non-residents, I broke it up by three monthly payments if you owe two fifty to five thousand. Six monthly payments if you owe five thousand to ten thousand and nine monthly payments if you owe ten thousand and up. Now, if you owe, for residents, if you owe less than a hundred dollars, we're looking for a full payment. We're not doing payment plans for less than a hundred dollars.
Absolutely.
For non-residents, if you owe less than two fifty, if you're a business, you ought to be able to pay that too, you know, that two forty-nine. So we didn't do payment plans for the smaller amount, but, and we set different levels of monthly payments based upon, pardon me. We set different levels of monthly payments based upon how much you owe. And I think that these are pretty fair. Um, I went through a lot of different gyrations on those monthly payments and I think the way it's laid out are pretty fair and I tried to be a little bit more lenient on the residents, you know, because I, you know, just trying to be a little bit more understanding.
Even if we do the payment plan and say that you still got bills that are occurring, are they still required to pay that plus what we asked on the payment plan?
Yes, ma'am. This payment plan is for things that are delinquent now. Okay? Um, and we want them to pay, uh, we want them to keep current, yes. So that's a great point that you've made. And, uh, we, we can add that to the resolution that they should continue. Obviously, we, 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 you know, continue to make your current payments. But of course, you did see where I said, if you become late with the current, then it's gonna get sent to the collection agency in sixty days right away.
Okay, so we giving them sixty days. If they miss out on it, it'll go to collections?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Why do we choose sixty days? Is there a reason why we chose sixty days instead of thirty days?
Well, I, well, um, it's, we, we, you know, thirty days, um, uh, we, we have a penalty after that, after the thirty days. And then after sixty days is a, I'm, I, and that, and now I'm gonna propose that in the next, uh, ordinance. Um, then there's an additional penalty and it goes to collections. Uh, so we can be on a little lenient. That's what's in, and I followed the ordinance and I, I didn't change the sixty days out of the current ordinance.
Okay. Only reason why I say that, that, uh, I think the thirty day, again, we are so, so, so behind on the revenue that is collected. And then again, we're just going deeper, deeper into debt with, you know, water bills not being paid again. Uh, if you don't pay your lights, they don't play with you. Your lights go off. You know, you can make arrangements. If you don't make those arrangements, the lights will shut off. I know everybody is in a different situation. I don't know everybody's situation, but again, if you use it, you gotta pay for it. Because if you don't, we still got an obligation to meet to the city. So those are just some things, uh, we all need to be mindful for. Because if we don't pay those bills, we can't make our promise or our note to the city of Chicago. So those are some other things, you know, just put it out there that we definitely have to think about. But again, uh, uh, a great program, so. Just hoping that we, once we put it out there that we, you know, stick to it.
And I'm glad you said that because, um, um, a couple of things, the sixty days, uh, according to the ordinance right now, we don't consider a delinquent until sixty days. So that, that's one of the reasons why, you know, we, we went with the sixty days. But, and speaking of the city of Chicago and of course even the, uh, I'm gonna, we're gonna talk probably in November about the meter program because I've been sitting down with, um, Chris and Janet and making sure that we get our, our paperwork to our EPA for the, uh, meter loan program. And of course, we have to show them, um, some effort and, and some change in our financial position, which I think it's significantly improved. But I know that, uh, with the kind of things that we're talking about here, in addition to, um, uh, and, and we'll present this to you all later, uh, we, we, we've changed, we're, with, with the new civic system, um, we looked at, and I sat down with our, our water department head and we came up with a lot of different ways that people can pick to make it easy for people to pay, uh, the auto debit, the, we have, uh, um, uh, the payment plan there. They, they don't, won't have to wait to get on a payment plan, uh, wait for an amnesty period to get on a payment plan. Um, and, and, and we're adding, um, them to be able to, um, uh, uh, call in, um, different, just different ways. That people can pay their bills and not get behind is what we are adding to the back of the bill and we're giving people all these opportunities. These are the different ways that you can pay.
Gotcha. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Okay.
Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, trustee.
No, ma'am, I was just wondering, um, is, is it, you, do you, do we know if our attorney has made it in?
I don't know, trustee, but you guys text, ma'am, I just told you that in the beginning, y'all text each other. Ontario just gave y'all an update, so I really don't.
So this, this is the thing, mayor, while I'm asking, and I know you probably wonder why we're asking. The thing is, I know that um, he, he's contacting. Um, uh, saying he's trying to figure out how he can, how he can get in. So I know we're going back and forth, but we'd really like a one here.
Can you tell?
I don't mind.
There are two phone numbers that Ontario has that we don't know.
Yeah, I don't mind him being on. What I'm saying to you, and we just said it in the beginning. If he's saying, he can either call, like most trustees do, a lot of people had a hard time getting a call, or he could hit the button, the link, either or.
Tell, tell me something, mayor. I think Dorothy, uh, uh, Ms. uh, Brown just said something.
Okay, wait, wait, trustee, trustee, no, 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 no. Y'all do that offline. We wanna take care of the business. You and Dorothy can text each other and take care of it. We wanna move the.
No, no, I was just asking for the record, mayor, if she could tell, tell me, what did you want me to have him do, just for the record, so I'm not letting him know.
Okay, no, we're not gonna do that. What I'm saying is you two can call each other. Hit your, hit your screen button. Y'all could call and get the attorney in, cause I don't wanna keep interrupting the meeting over an attorney. So you and Clark Brown can call each other and go back and forth over whatever it is with the attorney. I wanna move forward. Let's go. Anything else?
I was about to call you.
Anything else for Dorothy, trustees? Nothing else for Dorothy? Okay, so. My question is, do you, would you guys like to move forward? Can you call the row, clerk key, as relates to moving forward to the next agenda uh for this item?
Okay. Moving forward to the November, regular board meeting on November the first. Um, trustee Steve?
I, I'm ready to move forward.
Trustee Norwood?
Uh, I'm just moving forward.
Trustee Belcher?
Yes.
Trustee Holmes?
I, I, let's move forward.
Trustee Brown?
Hi.
And trustee House?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, uh, next, clerk Brown, you, you get that situated, you can move forward with the next item, the water ordinance.
Clerk Brown, I just hate to interrupt, but again, you're a current clerk.
Yeah, um. Can you move forward with the next item?
I was just trying to call the phone number that they sent me. They didn't answer.
Um, I could come back to you if you're not ready.
I, I'm, I'm ready.
Okay, so.
Mayor, do you wanna go back to F?
Well, I am. She had two items, so I just.
I'm sorry.
Away and then now Scott, Scott got two, two items.
No problem.
Okay.
We're doing.
Put that number to Ontario so he can ha, follow up on that, on that to see what the problem is. Cause the next item really goes back to uh, the payment plan and the amnesty program. Uh, because I was working on that, I, I was looking at the ordinance itself that actually uh permitted. Um, the um, uh, collections. And I found that um. That um, there's a couple of issues here. The ordinance says that the bill is supposed to be out the first day after the end of service. Well, there's no way you're gonna get it out the next day. We're barely getting the bill out within the twenty days that people are supposed to pay and get a discount. So I'm proposing that we uh change the bill to come out ten days after. See, because what has to happen is. Until we go to digital meters, there's a reconciliation process that takes place between the water department and uh Ms. Johnson. Uh, and also Derek Walker. They review to make sure that there's no aberrations. If, if there's something that's really, really out of the way, out of the ordinary, they'll send the meter readers back out to read again, et cetera. All of that has to take place. They can't get the bill out within twenty-four hours. So we wanna propose that we get the bill out within ten days of the, and, and I talked to Derek and he feels that they can get the bill out within ten days. Of the end of the period. And then put the twenty days on the backend, um, and say, then twenty, so that would be. Uh, the tenth of each month, then on the backend would be another twenty days or the end of the month, depending on if it's. Thirty-one days in the month or twenty-eight days. Uh, by the end of the month is when the bill would. And if in fact, they don't pay by the end of the month, then the penalty that is supposed to kick in will kick in. Now. Currently, uh, there's a penalty that's different than um, what the ordinance says that. I don't know if there's a previous water director who decided that we were gonna actually penalize differently than the ordinance. And as a matter of fact, that's one of the reasons why I think that people don't have an incentive to pay. It's two point four percent regardless of how old your bill goes. Uh, is what has been happening. So I'm proposing that we do the two point four, keep it at the two point four percent. After the thirty days, but after sixty days, add an, add two point six percent on and make it the five percent that the ordinance already says. It should be five percent after sixty days. Now. I also would like to propose that after the sixty days, we do the five percent, but there needs to be some incentives to keep from going over a thousand days. So every twenty days or every six months, there should be another five percent added on. Or if you all want to add something less than the five percent, I'm just saying, something needs to be added on if you continue. To be late, and I'm saying every six months. If you wanna do shorter than six months, then that, that would be fine too. But I was proposing, um, uh, so, so basically it would be five percent after sixty days, essentially, cause you had two point four percent after thirty. Another two point six would equal the five after sixty, and then every six months, another five percent if you have not paid your bill. So, so I'm asking for a, a couple of things there. To move it to the ten days when the bill should be uh due. When, when we send the bill out, the billing date, and then have the um, first, the bill actually due the end of the month. And then it not become delinquent, still become delinquent, sixty days after the billing date. So that's. Sixty days after the billing day would be sixty days after that, that uh tenth of the month. And then. Of course, the percentage is added on accordingly. So I don't know if I, 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 I was clear enough. I'm gonna stop now and have you all ask me questions so I can clarify if I, if I um, kinda. Uh, uh, lost anybody along the way.
Okay, any questions, board? No questions? Okay, um, can you get a consensus as it relates to moving forward to the next agenda for um, the water ordinance?
Trustee Steve?
I move forward.
Trustee Norwood?
Yes.
Trustee Belcher?
Yes.
Trustee Holmes?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
And trustee House?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, thank you. Uh, we're gonna go back to Scott now, so discussion of possible actions. This is letter F. Uh, related to the security cameras for Village Hall. Scott, you have the floor.
Good evening, trust, uh, mayor and trustees, village clerk, administrator. Um. We are uh, looking at the ca, uh, security system for the village hall, water department. Um, I, I did get three, three quotes for it. Um. You know, cause right now there is nothing going around. We can't, nobody can monitor anything at all inside or outside the building for any, any kind of. Crimes or anything like that that happens. Um, I did go through the proposals, um. Goldilocks, uh, the one I chose was uh. Was Imperial. It is a little bit more money, but they did a better layout with the cameras. Um, they also provided us with uh, an option to pay thirty-six months. Uh, forty-eight or sixty months of payment plan, which the other ones have not done. Um, but it is a better camera system and they are willing to work with us on payments.
Okay, um, any questions, board of trustees?
I have a question. This trustee Brown, can I be recognized?
Go ahead.
Okay. How did you choose these vendors?
Um, I, I, I called uh, the, all the uh, Goldilocks. We've done work with them before. Skynet, I, I chose Skynet Imperial because they're the, they're the most sought after ones in, in this area out here.
Okay, which one is in Bell, uh, is it Bellwood or Ridgeview? I forgot which one it was. Uh, the only thing with the payment plan, when you go from the thirty, I mean, uh. Sixty days or ninety days, that's an additional thousand dollars, thousands of dollars added on.
No, they.
I know they gotta make money.
Yeah, they put on the bottom a service, for a service plan fee. If we choose any of the monthly options, um, it's only three hundred and fifty-eight, forty-five.
No, no, I'm talking about the finance. I'm not talking about the service. I'm talking about the finance charge. When you start going into a payment plan, then you have to think about sixty months, seventy-two months. Those are extra thousands of dollars. I don't have my notepad, which I did write down notes for that, but it's extra thousands of dollars uh when you enter into a payment plan. So I definitely will uh, take a look at that. I took notes on it, but I just don't have them in front of me right now. The actual thousands of dollars, it will be with the sixty months, seventy-two months and stuff like that.
I did go through this and it's not, the only fee I seen on, on the contract was the three hundred and uh, fifty-eight dollars. There was no.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. I apologize.
No problem. There was no extra, no extra finance charges on there. That was part of the reason that uh, they were gonna do that. As far as their systems, cause it's their own systems, they're, they're providing to us.
But if you look at it, you will definitely see the sixty months versus the seventy-two months. Anytime you do a payment plan, you, you're gonna pay finance charge. They gotta make money for, for us holding them up, you know, not, if you pay it off. Say you get the cameras twenty-three thousand, okay, twenty-three thousand. But anytime we start going into monthly payments, they gotta make some money. So that is definitely something I looked at. I, I definitely will send it to you.
Okay.
Um, and then we can talk about it. I don't wanna hold the night up, but we are definitely.
Yeah, I, I, like I said, I mean, that, that was an option instead of putting all the money upfront. Um, there's two other options. Like I said, Skynet, there's a, it, their, their rate at uh, twenty, I think it was twenty-six. Twenty-one, and then uh, Goldilocks was at twenty-one thousand two. But I like, we definitely could get the, I mean, really think about putting the cameras in because, like I said, there's, there's nothing inside or outside.
I mean, I don't have a, trust me, I don't have a problem with security. It should have been cameras a long time ago.
Yeah.
Uh, for, you know, what we have going on there and the water department. So absolutely, I don't have a problem with the cameras going in. It's just the cost. And like I said, uh, when you said, it was thirty-six months, forty-eight months and sixty months. So what? And the prices went up when you start adding on with the finance. So we'll, we'll definitely discuss that. I won't hold everybody up tonight, but I'll get with you on that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Go, go ahead, trustee Norwood.
I was just wondering, ma'am, cause I looked over the quotes. I was just wondering, um, where would these, whichever one we decide, where would these funds come from?
Okay.
Do, what I understand, there is money in for uh, improvements on the village hall and. As far as the security in that, there was money set aside in the budget for it.
Can we ask, hey, ma'am?
Hi, Chris. Go ahead, Chris. Chris, you can try me.
Yeah, we did place money uh into the budget for our security upgrades of the little hall.
Got you. No, no, Chris, I was just wondering, do you, you can give me the line item, do you know?
One second, cause I don't have that one up in my hand. I believe that's um, it's gonna be at the, into, or what was that account? Trustee, I will get back to you on that number. I have to look it up in my internal documents. Okay. See what line item it is for that.
Okay, all right, thanks, Chris.
Anybody else?
Mayor, if I can be recognized?
Yeah, go ahead, trustee.
Chris, I have one other question. Did the property tax money start arriving or, I know at the finance committee meeting, we were um. Discussing cash flow. Have there been any changes in that status?
So, we did get distributions at the end of September and we have started getting quite a bit of distributions in October.
Okay, so from your estimation, uh, we, we should be okay to move forward with some spending. That be correct?
Yes. That we should be good from a cash flow standpoint.
Okay.
I can set that already a little bit better with uh, uh, the mayor and the trustees, uh, whoever's got any questions. And we could come up with what, uh, what one we can choose. If, if we don't wanna do a, a payment plan, we can set it up and we'll figure out which one did, did it best uh, serve the village for the security in that.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so um, clerk key, can you? Get a consensus as it relates to moving forward to the next agenda and then in between, they can figure out which company they wanna choose or go with?
Sure. Um, trustee Steve?
Move for I.
Uh, trustee Norwood? Okay, trustee Belcher? Trustee Holmes?
I move forward.
Trustee Brown?
Hi.
And trustee House?
Uh, yes, but I would ask Chris if you can email that line number to everybody so we'll be prepared for the next meeting.
Yep.
Okay, motion passed.
Thank you. Next on agenda is G, discussion and possible action um, as relates to floors for upstairs in Village Hall. Uh, Scott, you have the floor.
Yeah, um, you know, we, we moved this building over eight years ago. Um, we've cleaned that floor. At least four times that I know of. It's just, it's just so far damaged, the, you know, the mold spores, the dust mites, everything in there. Um, the next step would be replacing it. Um, be, for health issues for the employees and adds, it's set there, breathing that stuff in on a daily basis. Um, I did get three quotes on that. Uh, Menards was eleven something for the flooring. Uh, Lowe's was eleven, eleven thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars for the flooring, and then I got Home Depot coming at ten thousand. Um, it was right around ten, ten thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars. And they also said I could probably run it back through the bid room over there and even get it a little cheaper. So I can definitely uh, have a final. Thing on this, uh, final price on this before the next board meeting. Um, because I will go talk to the ma, uh, the manager over there and have him run it through and see what else they can back off for us. But the floors, I will be doing install on them. Um, but the, for ten grand for, it's over five thousand square foot.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, uh, board of trustees? All right.
Uh, ma, ma'am, I, I guess my question is, is this, uh, I guess for Chris. Chris, would this be coming out of the same line item and is similar?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you, ma'am.
All right, uh, clerk key, can you do a consensus as it relates to moving forward to the next uh, agenda? To replace the floors at Village Hall?
Trustee Steve?
Move for.
Trustee Norwood?
I just move forward.
Trustee Belcher?
Hi.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Holmes?
I.
Trustee Brown?
Hi.
And trustee House?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Will that be it, mayor and trustees?
That's it for you. Um, I don't think that's gonna do it for you. Yep.
But you have a good night.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, next on agenda is letter J, uh, discussion of possible action regarding replacing the public works uh sewer suction truck. Um, as you know, we get a lot of complaints with the sewer system in town and we've been actually doing a lot of good stuff. Um, as relates to public work, so I always wanna give you a shout out, Stacy Corral, being a super duper uh superintendent and the guys over there and girls. Over there uh, for just showing up and dealing with all the complaints and issues we have and smoothing it over for residents. They do see the movement and the process and progress that you guys are showing. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, this is to get him a public works sewer suction truck. Trustee, what, where, I'm sorry, uh, Stacy, you got the floor.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Good evening, everyone. So the uh, current truck that we have in that department. Uh, it was not there when we all came into uh, office four months ago. It was in the shop. And came back, uh, it went down again. It has been broken ever since, which has caused me to dig into the history on that uh, vehicle. Uh, what I'm finding is outrageous invoices for that sewer truck uh, every year. On the low end, sixty thousand, on the high end, at sometimes eighty thousand dollars in repairs. And I believe it is time to trade it in before it loses its value and uh, purchase a new truck to serve the community. With us going into winter months, the truck is used for water main breaks, uh, and other sewer repair. With us going into winter months, the truck is used for water main breaks, uh, and other sewer repairs. It's very vital to our day operations. Uh, we haven't been able to clean many storm sewers as, uh, as hoped in the beginning, uh, due to the downfall of the truck and, uh, the high number of hours. So right now I have two estimates, uh, with two different lease options in front of me. You all should have it also. Uh, I'm waiting on a third, so I can do a synopsis for you all. But, uh, I want to bring it to the council. We can discuss it cuz it is a serious matter and, uh, we're going into the winter months.
May I be recognized?
Yeah. Sure, go ahead, trustee.
Uh, I'm making a motion that J, K, L and M, everything done with public works, move to public works committee, which I will be having within the next week or so of the committee meeting, and we can discuss, discuss all this in length. So I'm making a motion that we move J, K, L and M to the public works committee meeting.
Okay. Okay, my question to you, trustee, is can you make sure that all this gets taken care of before the actual voting meeting, so it can go on a agenda and we can replace the items that they need over in public works? I, I really don't want us to drag our feet on this. That's why this is on this agenda, because it was time, time sensitive, and we need to purchase the items for him.
Yes, there will be beautifully taken care of.
All right, thank you. Uh, can you call the real clerk?
Okay, this is motion to move to the committee meeting for public works.
Right.
Trustee Steve?
Yeah, that's J, K, L and M.
Yes, J, K, L and M.
Hi.
Trustee Norwood?
Hi.
Trustee Belcher?
Hi.
Trustee Holmes?
Hi.
Trustee Brown?
Hi.
Trustee House?
Hi.
Motion passes to move to committee meeting for J, K, L and M.
All right, next on agenda is letter N, discussion and possible action regarding, um, resolution twenty-one dash related to grading and resurfaces of the police department parking lot. Uh, chief Collins, you have the floor. All right.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, mayor, trustees, madam clerk, citizens and, um, department heads. Um, in the police committee meeting, we discussed, uh, the parking lot at the police station and also in the rear of station one, which we share the same parking lot with the fire department. Uh, it has been crumbling and has been, um, in disrepair for many years. And it is time to start paying some attention to it, because there is also damage to a sewer, um, that is in the back in between station one and also the police department. Uh, we have been not parking on it. We've been placing, uh, orange cones around it, so no one parks on it before it caves in. But there is damage to it. Uh, there's also damage to a, uh, a drain, uh, that runs along the, uh, police department. And, um, the whole plate, the whole thing is just crumbling apart and it's time to take a look at repairing it. Uh, we provided three quotes, um, for the repair. And, uh, I wish Scott was on here to talk about it a little bit more, because he does have some insight on this, uh, some greater insight on this. Um, but in the packet, I also provided some photographs. I don't know if those made it to all the trustees, but that is the actual uh, parking lot. If you wanna do a site visit to come out and take a look at it, but I'm, uh, hoping that we can, uh, move forward with at least getting those repaired before it becomes a, uh, a greater tripping hazard and parking hazard.
Okay, any questions, trustees?
Uh, can I be recognized?
Who, who was it?
Trustee Belcher.
Yep, go ahead, trustee.
Okay, um, this was discussed at the police, uh, committee meeting.
We can't hear you.
It's my only question.
Trustee, we can't hear you, no. You're breaking out.
Still static, breaking up. Okay, while she get it together, uh, you might wanna reboot.
No.
Okay, go ahead. Try now. Trustee, try now.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me now? Okay, my only question was to, uh, for Chris, because it was stated that ARPA funds would be used for the repayment of police, um, resurfacing, uh, can you, um, validate, validate? I think somebody had requested the list, but is that something I just wanna have it for the record?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
It can, I can answer it for you. It can be used for that, uh, we're dealing with the sewers. So by dealing with the sewer, that's our way of getting the parking lot fixed. So the attorney's on here as well, if you wanna attorney opinion of it, but it is legal. That's what you're asking.
Mayor, may I ask a question? I didn't hear what funds she mentioned.
American, American Rescue, the one point five.
Okay, all right, got it.
We talked about it at the police, uh, police committee, yeah. We discussed it and everybody was in agreement with it, so.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
Yes, trustee?
Do you know how much is in the motor tax fuel, um, account?
More of that, uh, it's got over two million.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, clerk key? You got a question?
Mayor, can I be recognized? I just have one question.
One second, trustee, let, let Holmes.
Okay.
Go ahead, trustee Holmes.
Yeah, just hoping that they're in support of, um, getting this surface done, you know, because of the, uh, trucks and cars that are going in and out. May be getting severe damage to them and also, uh, public safety of people walking in and out there and possibly, um, damage, more damage to the sewer. Maybe caving in might cause as well, so hopefully supporting, uh, passes.
Okay, thank you, trustee.
Okay, this is for, uh, Chris. I know you say it's coming out of motor fuel tax fund. Uh, what else? You can send it to me later, but I need to know what else is coming out of there that we are paying for. And you can send it to me via email, that's fine.
Wait, maybe I misunderstood. The question I received from trustee Belcher was, well, how much money was in motor fuel tax fund?
I know you said this payment is also coming out of that, correct, for the pavement?
No, it was my understanding that's coming out of ARPA money. I thought that's what was said.
Correct.
So it's coming out of the American Rescue Plan Act, correct?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. I got confused.
All right, uh, clerk key, can you, uh, poll the board and get a consensus to move forward to the next agenda to repay the parking lot for police?
Okay, um, trustee Steve?
Yes, let's move for it.
Trustee Norwood?
Yes.
Trustee Belcher?
Yes.
Trustee Holmes?
Hi.
Trustee Brown?
Hi.
Trustee House?
Yes.
Motion passed to move forward to November the first board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Next on agenda is O, discussion of possible action regarding disorderly house ordinance. Uh, chief Collins, you have the floor.
Thank you. Also, what I'd like to bring forward for discussion is the, uh, possibility of adopting an ordinance that deals with, uh, drug houses, gang houses, uh, houses of disorder, prostitution and basic, uh, nuisances. And the reason I'm bringing this forward is right now, we do have the, the Crime Free Housing Act and, uh, we have the nuisance abatement. But what that specifically deals with is rental properties. So that gives the, uh, the village the ability to go after the property owner to help clean up the mess that's on their property. But we also have the problem of not having, uh, an ordinance or enough teeth in the ordinance to deal with actual owners who live at their properties and the tenants, uh, who live there too. So we get numerous calls every year, numerous calls of nuisance activity, loud talking, loud music, uh, hanging out, uh, drinking, uh, gambling, all kinds of, all kinds of things. And these happen at, uh, next door to good people who live in the, in the, uh, community. They call the police and they expect us to come and handle those problems. And one of the problem is we don't have the tool to properly deal with it. So I'm proposing an ordinance that gives the police department the ability to issue a citation to the person who's actually in control of the property. Whether, whether it be a rental property or whether it be a property that's already owned that the person is living in. Um, the ordinance that I'm also proposing deals with areas where there's frequent police visits and frequent calls for ambulance services. And, uh, I won't read the whole thing, but just a brief description of it. It shall be unlawful for a property owner, lessor or tenant to maintain, keep or lease or allow a home room or other premise, including commercial premises, to be disruptive to the peace and well-being of the surrounding community. Houses, rooms or other premises, including commercial, commercial premises, are deemed to be a public nuisance and disruptive or frequent visits for police ambulance service for noise, assaults, batteries, drinking, intoxicating beverages, loitering, gaming and et cetera. Um, these, this will help the police department get some of these things under control. If we have an actual ordinance and where we can do something. Um, and it gives us just a little bit more power to help bring peace to a community or a neighborhood that desperately needs it. The one thing I would suggest, and I did provide a sample ordinance, the one thing that I would suggest is that we start the fine at five hundred dollars instead of the two hundred dollars, and we move on from there. And I believe that having an ordinance like this will help cur- curb some of the nuisance behavior that we get a lot of calls for.
All right, any questions?
Yeah, um, chi- chief Collins, would this be, uh, in addition to, uh, the, the housing act that we spoke of in the fire committee?
Right, we don't wanna re, we don't wanna replace that, uh, that particular ordinance. Um, because we will still need that ordinance, because it also gives, it does give the village the authority to force the property owner to bring their tenants into compliance or to evict them. And if the property owner does not, um, comply with the village's, uh, ordinance, then the property owner can lose their license to operate a rental property within the village of Dalton.
Got you. So you're gonna use them interchangeably?
Yes.
Got you. Thanks, chief, for that.
Any other questions?
One question. I know, chief, we talked about it, um, like, um, in our policing meeting. So say for instance, the nuisance, um, there is a particular address. They had problems before, the tenant was forced to move out. They have new tenants now, and the police is back at that address again. So will it follow the address or will it follow the tenant?
This, the proposed ordinance will, uh, address the person who is in charge of the property. Not the owner, but the person who actually lived there, whose name is on the lease.
Okay, so it will follow the tenant?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay, clerk key, can you do a consensus of the board to move forward to the next voting board meeting?
Sure, um, trustee Steve?
Yes, I'm okay with that.
Trustee Norwood?
Let's move for it.
Trustee Belcher?
Hi.
Trustee Holmes? Is trustee Holmes still on? I don't see him. Uh, trustee Brown?
Hi.
Trustee House?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed to move forward to the November the first board, regular board meeting.
All right, next on the agenda is discussion of possible action regarding resolution twenty-one dash related to DACRA contract renewal. Chief Collins, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, I'm bringing forward a contract that is due for renewal. It will be expiring in the month of November this year. Uh, what DACRA is, is municipal enforcement software that we use, um, to enter our, uh, parking citations in or any other local ordinance citations. And it is also the same software that is used in court, uh, by the hearing officer. Uh, the changes that will be made to the contract is the monthly licensing fee will go from fifteen hundred to fifteen sixty um, per month, uh, in twenty twenty-two. In twenty twenty-three, this contract will go to sixteen thirty and twenty twenty-four will go to, uh, seventeen oh three. It also is a per ticket, uh, that we do pay. The first year increase would be two dollars per ticket to two dollars and eight cents. In twenty twenty-three, it'll go to two seventeen, two dollars and seventeen cents per ticket. In twenty twenty-four, uh, two twenty-seven per ticket. Um, just like any vendor there in business to make money, but we also, um, collect our, our fines, so we can pay these vendors. Um, so contracts do increase occasionally. And it just so happens that this particular contract does have some increases in it, which I do think we can handle, uh, budgetarily.
All right, any questions?
Can I be recognized?
Trustee Belcher, go ahead.
Okay, um, is this the only company that does this?
The, the question sounded as if this, is this the only company that does this? This is the most popular company that does it, and we already use the software. Um, if we decided we wanted to go with a different company, there would be a huge migration of data, which would probably cost us. Um, we are happy with DACRA. DACRA has a very, uh, very good service. And, uh, we have no issues with the DACRA, uh, software or program.
Okay, and then is there, uh, cuz I read, uh, read through it, uh, is there a, um, cuz I know you gave up to three years, so is it a thirty-six month agreement? Or they, they just were giving us what the increases would be? Like, what is the agreement?
The, uh, agreement actually does go to twenty twenty-four. Um, there is nothing that bars us from discussing if we want a contract with less terms or, I mean, less years or more years. So they are flexible with that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any more questions? All right, clerk key, can you poll the board and get a consensus to move forward to the next voting, um, meeting?
Trustee Steve? Trustee Norwood?
Yeah, move forward.
Trustee Belcher?
Hi.
Trustee Holmes?
Hi.
Trustee Brown?
Hi.
Trustee House?
Yes.
Okay, mayor, before we move forward, I didn't get Holmes, trustee Holmes' vote on the disorderly house ordinance. I see that he's back.
Okay.
And I'd like to get his vote.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, next on agenda is letter Q, discussion of possible action regarding resolution twenty-one dash related to placing a stop sign at the corner of one hundred forty-second street and Manor. Um, trustee House and chief Collins. I know chief Collins being the, the word for it, so did you want him to speak first, trustee House, or you like to go first?
Uh, yeah, I'll be brief, cuz I think chief Collins has a lot more details. Um, I received a few phone calls from residents asking about that intersection, so I did speak with the chief and I wanna say thank you for the write-up that you did and the follow-up on that and, uh, kinda turn it over to you for, uh, your assessment, so thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Um, yes, it was brought to my attention that, uh, residents have difficulty emerging from Manor onto one hundred forty-second. So the recommendation would be to place stop signs in the area of one hundred forty-second and Manor. Uh, I did provide in a packet a couple photographs. The only concern that I would have with the installation of, uh, stop signs, this would be a T-section. It wouldn't be a four-stop intersection. This would be only a three-stops in an intersection. But on the south side of one hundred forty-second, on the eastbound traffic, now hold up. There is a railroad traffic control, uh, sign that is in place, where the stop sign would go very close to. Uh, so the stop sign would either be, uh, concealed by the railroad sign, or the railroad sign would be concealed by the stop sign. So my suggestion is if we move forward with installation of a stop sign, the railroad sign would have to be moved, and I would recommend at least twenty-five to thirty feet in front of, or twenty-five or thirty feet behind the stop sign, so that the stop sign can be properly seen and, uh, properly complied to. I'm not sure if we would have to enter into some type of discussion with the railroad, uh, to move this sign. I don't know if, um, this particular sign that says rough crossing is something that is, um, controlled by them and it has to be within a certain amount of feet of the tracks, but this will require just a little bit more research before we move that sign.
Okay, I'm in totally agreements with that. Um, I support the initiative. And I do think you should reach out to the railroad, just to be in compliance where you guys place it. So, any other questions? All right, can you get a census clerk key to move forward to the next agenda, placing a stop sign?
Sure, trustee Steve?
All right, let's move for it.
Trustee Norwood?
Yes.
Trustee Belcher?
Hi.
Trustee Holmes?
Hi.
Trustee Brown?
Hi.
Trustee House?
Yes.
Motion passed to move forward.
All right, thank you. Next on agenda is letter R, discussion of possible action regarding Resolution twenty-one dash related to My Community Plant Foundation providing solar energy to the Village of Dalton residents. My Community Plant Foundation is a business that is in Dalton. Mr. Johnson, I do see you, how you doing sir? Welcome. And before you start, I just want to say that I do support people being solar efficient with their roofs. So a lot of people are putting them panels on their roof. So he's here to do a presentation to see if this do fit within our community or if any residents see fit to utilize his services. He is on one hundred forty-second in Chicago Road slash Martin Luther King Drive now. So Mr. Johnson, you do have the floor.
Thank you so very much, Madam Mayor, thank you for having me. And also good evening to all members of the council. I'm, I'm grateful that in front of you, you have a slide presentation that I delivered to your office, Madam Mayor, some time ago. And I, I'd like to do two things if I could. With me are some of my team members. One is Brett Jones from Supreme Solutions and Lee Omen from BioStar Renewables. As you're probably aware, My Community Plant Foundation has the first Illinois solar for all projects in Cook County. Unfortunately, the legislation attempted to remedy low and moderate income households access to solar energy. And we only got one in Cook County that was in Chicago Heights at one of our member churches. And that's an MCP project. The second one is in Bridgeview with one of our Muslim members. And the third is in Country Club Hills. But forgive me, but I'm taught that charity begins at home. And since my office is in Dalton, it just makes sense that I approached this body to see if you are interested in two things. One, solar energy for the Village of Dalton. At some juncture, you might ask, well Reverend, we're interested in renewable energy, what's it going to cost us? Whatever your current utility bill is, minus a nominal reduction, is what it will cost you. I will bring every penny to this project through my partners and I. So there will never, ever, ever be an additional line item in your budget for renewable energy, period. We will do two things. One, in your materials, you'll notice that we do workforce development. We will train residents and whoever wants to join our workforce development initiatives. In fact, we'll have one starting on November first. And the installation and maintenance of solar panels. We will bring everything to the table that is necessary for the completion of this project. I, I'd like to talk for a couple of seconds about our partners, Supreme Solutions and BioStar Renewable. First, BioStar Renewables. First, Madam Mayor, does everyone on, in the council and yourself have a copy of the materials I sent you?
Yes, and a package.
Wonderful. So BioStar Renewables, you'll notice from your material, and you can go online. They are subject matter experts in renewable energy. We have projects ranging from the Pacific Ocean to the Atlantic, literally all over the country. There's a larger deck, if you should choose to ask for it, that reflects the value of the initiatives. They range in, I think the smallest one might be a couple of hundred thousand to about forty million dollars. And that just talks about the robust nature of solar energy. And then Supreme Solutions is a member of MCP, but also our EPC. So they're responsible to make sure that your roofers are hired, any plumbers, electricians, carpenters, et cetera. That's the lane that they are in. There are three potential opportunities for solar panels. One, rooftops. As we look at what we thought were the buildings that the city owns, we concluded that we could put an array of panels on top of those buildings that would solve all of the, all of the electricity needs for the city. But there are other options, and I, I would bet you would consider these as well. The other two options are canopies and ground mounts. We could not discern, Madam Mayor, which of the vacant properties, the vacant lots that we were able to discern are owned by the city or who owned the properties? If you own the lots, then the cheapest route would be the ground mounts. And parenthetically, they produce the largest array, the largest amount of electricity. But let's talk about the canopies for a second. Canopies are the most expensive. But again, none of these dollars come out of your budget. They are the most expensive, but they also have the unique feature that we offer, which is a hotspot. So you won't be purchasing, excuse me, internet access. More importantly, you can utilize these hotspots for the residents of Dalton or any, any way you want to, any way you want to utilize them. We generally believe that residents in the southern portion of Cook County are not holistically able to access the internet. So we offer this option as well. In the package are next steps and information about the links for all of the, my member companies, my partners that is, and some of our earlier projects. So simply put, we're offering to cover, cover any part of the city with rooftop, canopies, or ground mounts. And then provide any information that you need as we move towards this initiative. There is however, one thing we'd ask you to do, and that is to sign a letter of intent that would allow us to look at your current utility bill and then begin to make a determination as to what amount of savings you'll experience immediately and the depth and length of the project. But thank you very much for your time, are there any questions?
Any questions, Board? Okay, well, someone had a question?
May I be recognized?
Sure, go ahead, Trustee.
So is this initiative for the Village of Dalton in its entirety as seeking residents to do it? Or is this strictly for Village of Dalton properties?
So the initial, the initial initiative would be for the village specifically. If the city chose to utilize its broken property, you will have more electricity than you currently use. At that time, you can define which off-takers you want to utilize. And my logic suggests you might do it with your own residents. Certainly, Illinois Solar For All suggests, that, excuse me, that you might, if you're, if you're a nonprofit, there are other incentives. But the direct answer to your question is, if you utilize your parking lots and whatever vacant properties the city has, then you'll produce more electricity than we believe the village currently utilizes. And your off-takers could very well be your residents. Which then just becomes another revenue stream for the village. And mind you, our, our solar arrays have a lifespan of about thirty-five years. Our financing model will take us anywhere from ten on the low end to fifteen on the high end, which, which means you're paying us your electric bill for that electricity. But then you own the arrays at whatever the term ends until the lifespan of the arrays. At that juncture, you'll no longer have an electric bill at all. What you will do within is repurpose those dollars for whatever the village concludes is an appropriate distribution mechanism for those monies. But you'll no longer have a utility bill. And I noticed that Lee Omen is on, Lee is representing BioStar, one of our group partners for this initiative.
Any other questions?
I have another question, so when he, you just made the statement about, because I guess maybe, I don't know if I wasn't clear. So it's initially for the village, but you're saying based on the area that is placed, residents may possibly benefit from it. So if residents are benefiting from it indirectly and our bills go lower, correct? That's what I'm just trying to clarify.
It's not indirect, that's direct. Because now you're selling, they become off-takers for the electricity you produce. Generally speaking, now the residents are also going to have a lower electric bill. But that's for you to decide. Moreover, those dollars come into your coffers.
Right, but the, the tax that's on our electric bill, the portion that goes to the Village of Dalton, then we'll be minimizing that amount, correct? Because the, the bills will be lower.
The, but the Village of Dalton won't, wouldn't longer have an electric bill.
No, I'm saying on, on our electric bill where the, that port, the tax that goes to the Village of Dalton, so if our bills are lower, then we'll be minimizing the amount that actually goes to the bill. I'm just saying in retrospect, because the over, the over synopsis would be that the residents will benefit. But the back of the...
I guess to some degree...
If our bill is lower, then there's less money going to the village.
So here's my question.
Okay, okay.
If my light bill is ten dollars and the village gets ten percent of what I pay, that means you get a dollar. But if I'm buying my electricity from you and you're charging me seven dollars, then yes, you're going to lose one dollar. But now you get the entire seven dollars because you are the provider of that utility. And you're not getting it via tax. So your residents are paying, they're not only paying ten dollars, they're paying seven dollars. But you're only getting the dollar from that ten to begin with. But now that dollar is gone, so you're absolutely correct, you're going to lose that dollar. But in place of that dollar, you're going to get ten dollars. So in, in my mind, it is a net gain. But Mr. Omen, you're on the line, you want to, he is actually, he like I both have JDs, but he, he's also a tax attorney. Lee, would you unmute yourself please? And if my, if my response is cheesy in some place, correct it. Leah, can you hear me, Lee? Okay, can you unmute your phone? I think I'm correct. My, my simple math, I, my simple math, I think is correct. You may lose that one dollar, but you'll gain seven.
Okay, thank you, and I think you're waiting for someone else.
Can anyone hear me?
We can, I hear you now.
Okay. Hey, also Brett, Brett is trying to get in, he's in the waiting room and they have not let him in.
Well, he was in, he fell off, but Lee, you want to address that question that Trustee?
Belcher.
Belcher?
So basically what happens is, let's say your utility bill is now ten dollars. We would come in and the bill would be the equivalent of nine dollars, right? So you'd have, you would have a cost saving that we would make sure that you would have, and we would come in and lower your bill.
So for Lee, that's two different questions. You're talking about the village's utility bill itself. But the trustee's concern was the residents pay, when they pay their bill, there's a tax add-on that benefits the village, the operating expense of the village. And the trustee was appropriately concerned that that revenue stream might be compromised. But my response to that was...
Because typically what happens is when you're billing the residents, there's certain things that, that happen in the taxes. Is the taxes based upon a percentage of what they pay on their utility bill? Or is it a, a flat fee?
Trustee Belcher?
I think Chris may know the exact answer, I don't know if it's a percentage or a flat fee. I'm almost certain it's a percentage though.
Yeah, it, it, then technically, then, I mean, you still pa, you still have a tax that passes on. But the question is, if we lower their bill from ten dollars to nine dollars, there would be potentially a, a left, a, a tax revenue decrease.
Unless we, if, if the, if the residents are the off-takers, then the village is selling electricity to the residents, so they actually get more money.
Yeah, and before I comment on that, that would, we, we would have to work with respect to the utility and how that billing would pass through. And yes, what the Reverend is saying is true, is that you could have the village be the one to collect the power and then sell the power on. And if that was the case, then their revenue model would stay the same.
So, Madam Mayor, I think if the council agrees, we would do a letter of intent and we would just codify these responses. In addition to the savings of the village, the timeframe of the entire project, and then I would go to the next step of looking at what, what off-takers may be buying electricity from the village. But with the LOI, we would also take a better look at the geography of the village and then give you a definitive proposal with respect to the three arrays, the rooftop, the canopies, and the ground mount. So the next step, should the council choose to go forward, is that we would deliver to you a letter of intent and begin to answer those questions and codify them. There's no, as I'm sure you're aware, there is no commitment on behalf of the village whatsoever, but it does codify the conversation.
Okay, well, seeing as though that some board members still have questions, I think that you guys should talk offline and go into more details as it relates to it. If the board sees something different that I don't see, then you guys can vote to move it to the next board meeting. But my advice to the board members would be to speak with you to get a full understanding of what it is you're trying to accomplish. So it's...
Mayor, who can be recognized?
What do y'all think?
Okay, no, I'm in agreement with that suggestion. One thing I did want to ask while we have them is, are there any other municipalities utilizing this service in the manner that we're describing?
So in the material that you have, there are multiple municipalities around the country where BioStar has participated in providing solar energy. So the short answer to the question is yes, and if you'd like, we can send that to you.
Will you do, thank you.
Okay, so is everybody in agreements with speaking offline for this item?
Yes, I'm in agreement with speaking offline about this item.
I am as well, Trustee Brown.
So, if I could ask one question, Madam Mayor?
Sure.
Does that mean, well, my office is literally across the street? So I'm not sure if that means I should come across the street to meet with your, with your colleagues? Or they want to meet with me or how it's going to work?
Sure, so what I would do is I will have the village administrator, Dorothy Brown, send you everybody contact information. And then vice versa, I will also send all the board of trustees your contact information. And then you guys can set up a meeting amongst yourselves to discuss it. But the board can only meet where the time with you, no problem. Okay, moving on. Next on the agenda is ask, discussion of possible action on Resolution twenty-one dash regarding soliciting requests for proposals, which is RFP for the twenty twenty-one audit. The reason why I place this on the agenda is because it is that time. I do understand that Trustee House is Chair for Finance and I just wanted to be positive in moving forward as relates to getting RFPs out now. And then once they do come in, then he can have it in his committee meeting. So basically, I'm here to hear from the board of trustees as it relates to your next steps. Trustees, any questions?
Mayor, can I be recognized?
Sure.
All right, I kind of want to see where we're at in the process, because generally we already, by now, I believe we would already have had an engagement letter and been somewhere in the process. Chris, have we already started this process yet? Because my concern would be if we start, if we start RFP now, we have to do the RFP, pick somebody, get engagement, and we may fall further behind on getting the FY twenty-one audit. So Chris, can you kind of expand on where we're at?
So we have not engaged with any audit firm yet to perform the FY twenty-one audit yet.
Okay.
So, I got a question, question, may I be recognized? Chris, I mean, I remember from the last one, I think it used, we used Lauterback and Amherst, so we're just switching it up now. And, and, and does it, does it help? And maybe you can help me or Jason with your experience in finances. It help to use the one who's been doing it for six years since they've been, have, have a good history of it and a good, you know, been doing it for some years, or what's your thoughts on that?
It's dependent on the village. It, I mean, firm that comes in is going to do the similar type of audit. This year, we will have a standard financial audit that you have, and you will also have a... Um this year, we will have a standard uh financial audit that you have, and you will also have a single audit. So whatever RFP, whichever firm comes in, you will have to do both a regular standard uh financial audit and a single audit.
And if I can kind of, uh I think there's there's a pro and a con. Uh trustee Steve, on one side, there's the people that are familiar with the audit, the other side of it is, when you get people too familiar, you may not get the same that you you may get too comfortable with it. So it depends on preference. Um I would be in agreement with doing RFP, but I would also leave it open for the current auditors as well as new ones, cause I think it's good to uh get a price comparison and see which way we move forward. I don't think, I don't have any objection to the current firm that we've had, cause I think that we've gotten good information. Uh their familiarity has has kind of helped us, but I'm also open to receiving other offers to see which direction the board would like to go.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, any other questions? Okay, Clark Key, can you call the row as relates to moving forward for RFP for the next board? You're muted. Clark Key, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Trustee Steve?
Hi.
Trustee Norwood?
Yes.
Trustee Belcher?
Hi.
Trustee Holmes?
Hi.
Trustee Brown?
Hi.
Trustee House?
Hi.
Motion passed to move forward.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is letter T, discussion of possible action regarding resolution twenty-one dash for a class eight renewal requested for five nine nine Sibley in Dalton, New Age Land Development LLC. Um are you on here? Dorothy, is this vendor on here or their attorney?
Who's uh Elmo's?
Hello, Mayor, this is uh Elmo for New Age Land Development, how are you?
All right, I'm okay, how you doing?
Good, um.
Yeah.
This is for the property that I own over there in five nine nine Sibley. Um it was built in two thousand and eight. I built it, uh it was a bar restaurant before I built in two thousand and eight. There was a ten-year class classification uh for class eight there. It had expired. Um I had asked a couple of times to get it renewed, and for whatever reason, it kept getting kicked down the road. So I'm hoping to have it another uh renewed for another ten years um due to the situation over there. Property taxes have went from approximately thirty-three thousand now, last year was about seventy-four thousand. Um twenty twenty wa- was a very difficult year with rents. We submitted documents to show how the property um the uh rents have gone down in twenty twenty. And uh it's unable to sustain itself with the property taxes there and keeping the property uh occupied with 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 valuable business tenants there. Otherwise, you know, it's it's a condition where we might have to have to have vacant a lot of the spaces there. So we're respectively requesting a renewal of the class eight for that particular shopping center.
Okay, um thank you. Board of trustees, do you have any questions? Lady to the class eight?
If I can ask, um and I'll maybe I'll ask the attorney. Um traditionally, I and for in terms of initial uh class eights, I've been in favor of them because they help with the development and get in and get in there and give you a ten-year time period uh to get the business up and establish our renewals. Um I've been traditionally opposed to them because you've had the benefit of the tax break, and then that also can impact of the home payer, the home, the homeowners within the community. Uh so I understand that there has been some increase, uh but I think that was something that was expected being a ten-year, a ten-year process for having the initial class eight. So can you kind of maybe elaborate on is there a special scenario or something different that would prove that other than the fact that the taxes have increased? Cause I think a lot of homeowners also sense uh feel that same pain.
When it was a class eight, we had built it and the property um had brought in substantial tenants, and they had kept the taxes at a reasonable price. Um those are all triple, those are all gross leases in that particular plaza. A couple of them have been there since the initial um of construction when we opened up that building in two thousand and eight. There's just no way at the current tax value that that property is gonna stay occupied. There's no way that we're going to get ten to twelve dollars just for square foot for taxes. There's gonna be vacancies at that property. I've tried many times, I've hired brokers to uh to possibly get right now, there's it's based upon five to six fifty uh of property tax and the rent. Um without the class eight, you're looking at eight to ten dollars um square foot for taxes, there's just no way to have tenants there, there's no way to keep those tenants there. Um we had lost Subway, we had lost a um um another tenant that was there, there was the currently is a tobacco store there, but there was another tenant that vacated because of the rent. Uh the current salon there is paying fifty percent rent right now. The uh Jimmy's is paying uh seventy-five percent of what the rent was before. Um and there's no way to that property to uh to to continue operating at any kind of eighty or seventy-five percent capacity at the rent. There's just no way to get the rent there, and I just hate that property to be with vacant space. There was always been, you know, a a pretty occupied property businesses in that area.
Okay, well, thank you. Any other questions?
Oh, you may, may I be recognized? I I know you, I I know you gave us the amount per square feet. Um can you give us the amount in general? So I I guess I'm wondering, without the typically, what what are you, where are you now? And where are you normally when you have the class eight? I guess I'm wondering the difference.
With the class eight, it's between four fifty and six fifty, taxes would be. That's besides, you know, the insurance and common area expenses, that it's just property taxes without the class eight. You're looking between eight to ten dollars a square foot in taxes. The property is about ten thousand fifty square feet total, that's the entire plaza. So to have somebody come in to that particular plaza to ask them to pay eight to ten dollars a square foot in taxes is just virtually impossible. Um unfortunately, there's there's other units in that area and other villages that can get a lot cheaper, so it's gonna force that property to have a lot of vacancies. And I prefer not to have vacancies, and I'm sure the village knows that you know, vacancies can even reduce property taxes uh based upon vacancies. I don't wanna do that, I'd rather keep the property occupied with tenants instead of having vacancies and um and 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 forcing the property to, you know, not to be not to be sustainable, that's all. So without the section, without the class eight, you're looking probably eight to ten dollars a square foot. With the property tax, with the class eight, you're looking I hope uh between five and four fifty and six dollars.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Okay. Okay.
I have one question, Mayor, can I be recognized?
Go ahead, trust me.
Okay, how much are you paying in property taxes without the class eight? How much will you be paying?
When it was class eight, it was between thirty-five and thirty-eight. Uh twenty twenty um twenty twenty was about seventy-four thousand five hundred.
With the class eight?
Without, it hasn't had class eight. I think for a year now, it's been expired.
Okay, so without the class eight, you're at seventy-four, but when you had the class, it between thirty-five and thirty-eight.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I think it was forty thousand, maybe one year max.
All right, any other questions?
Mayor, can I be recognized?
Mr. Trustee.
Mayor, can I be recognized? Um this is for um possibly the attorney. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
We can.
Uh this is for the attorney, um possibly. Does it have to be a ten-year class eight, or is there other options outside of a ten-year?
I've I've never heard of a five-year or or less, but I mean, we can deal with a five-year, I'm fine with a five-year and deal with it in five years. Um we just need some kind of relief now. I'm not just a lawyer, I'm also the owner of the property.
No, I was asking our our, I was asking the the village attorney, sir.
Yes, trustee Belcher, um I the renewal is for a set time period. I don't believe you could do like incremental renewals uh like for five years. But this is Jimmy Vaselli's, this is his arena, this is what he does. But I'm looking at the class eight renewals, and it is for a set time period as established by the county. So it's not something that we can just make it up as we go along.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Uh yeah, yes, just just for me, uh excuse me, ma'am, may I be recognized with the Ms. Raines? Uh Ms. Raines, so I you you saying, I know it's a set time. So our our option is to grant the ten-year period or not, correct?
That's my understanding, but I would defer to Mister Vaselli, cause he's the expert in the uh this tax incentive area. He handles all of the class eight tax incentive requests for the village.
Okay, is Vaselli on? Thank you, thanks.
He is not, but I can get an opinion for you on that. I will ask him for that opinion, and I can circulate it to the board.
Thank you, thanks, thanks.
Okay. Uh here are no more questions, or are there any more questions? Okay, um can you hold the board and see if they would like to move forward with the class eight as relates to what's that address? Five nine nine Sibley. Clark Key?
Sure. Trustee Steve?
Okay, with it.
Trustee Norwood?
Let's hope for it.
Trustee Belcher?
Hi.
Trustee Holmes?
Hi.
Trustee Brown?
Hi.
Trustee House?
Yes.
Motion passed to move forward. November first meeting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
No problem. Next on the agenda is letter U. I know it's a lot of letters, boy. Uh discussion of possible action regarding resolution twenty-one dash related to a contract to hire Optima Lab to perform weekly COVID-nineteen testing in unvaccinated village of Dalton employees unless an employee has a religious or medical uh exception. Um this was put on by trustee House, you have before.
Okay, thank you very much, Mayor. Uh no, we had previously spoke about a company doing uh the service, so this is a competitive, I guess, proposal. Uh this one, I was I was interested in hearing out because they had a opportunity where the village can do the similar service without it being a cost to the village residents or taxpayers. So I wanna ask Mister Franklin if he and his team are ready and would like to give the presentation to the board and the community.
Okay, thank you, you can, where what's his name?
Mister Daniel Franklin. And Mister Franklin, if you can introduce your team, please.
Hello, good afternoon, good evening, uh Madam Mayor and trustees and clerk. Good to see everyone, I'm so excited to be um in this meeting this uh evening. Um thank you so much again. Um I have uh with me um uh my counterparts, Dr. Richard Watson. Um he'll be speaking um on the science and the technical piece, uh well, the science piece behind uh testing versus uh PCR versus rapid testing. Um and also the importance of it as well. Um I have uh Glady in Dallas and Rosa Linda in Dallas as well. Uh they'll be talking about the technicalities of the lab and how the lab is able uh to withstand and handle um you know, all of the uh the testing requirements and the staffing piece as well as far as us getting uh the testing done at each uh facility as well and um how this whole process will be covered um to the village of Dalton. Um I've had the privilege uh for a number of years. Well, first to just give a background, my family uh actually did business in Dalton. My family owned Sibley Boulevard and also on Greenwood, did uh business in Dalton. Uh Music Net School of Music was uh was one of you guys is um uh I guess businesses in the community for a number of years in the village of Dalton, so I'm not a stranger to the village of Dalton at uh by any uh long shot or anything like that. Um and so, you know, I've been owning for a number of years a home healthcare agency, and our home healthcare agency has been uh the main focus of it has been to go into the waste places, as the Bible would say, and turn them into the Garden of Eden. So we wanted to give great um great uh healthcare to uh low-income communities um as well as um in a higher up uh higher uh revenue-earning communities as well. And trying to, you know, bridge the gap between the disparities of healthcare in both uh facets. Um so when it relates to testing, um I did bring uh my team together so that we can speak on that and how we're able uh to bring this uh this lab, Optima Lab, to the village of Dalton. Uh actually, we're we're free of charge, and it's covered completely by uh the CARES Act. And uh my counterparts will discuss that. Um I'm trying to see is, I'm gonna share my screen uh just for a moment, and I'm gonna turn the floor over to Glady. She's gonna talk about about the lab and the processes with the lab and all the technical sides of the lab. Then we're gonna have Dr. Watson, who has done over fifty thousand tests nationwide. Um Optima Lab has literally, we've been from coast to coast uh doing testing, I'm talking about not just PCR testing, but rapid testing as well uh from uh all across the nation. Uh with uh Glady and Linda, we have made it, and Dr. Watson, uh we have been able to reach uh and test in California, Florida right now, where we're servicing right now seventy-eight nursing homes right now um in the state of Florida, and we're getting their test results back within twenty-four hours. We are so committed to the process of making sure that we can give uh accurate testing uh that we have even uh so so much as so uh you know, got on, uh chartered our private jetliners. Not even, not only just that, but we've also uh contracted with uh Delta, United, and American Airlines as well to make sure that we're able to to hit all of these communities across, not just locally in Chicago, but across the nation. Uh we have also uh picked up uh testing uh fifty-six hundred people at the Ford plant on Torrance. Uh we started there just this past Friday. Uh and we're doing testing there as well as in Chicago Heights as well. So the whole entire mandate for us to test at the Ford plant uh for all the shifts at both the Stampin' Plant in Chicago Heights as well as for the Ford plant and uh on Torrance. We've just started that process as of October fifteenth, and uh we're grateful for it. And what we wanna do is bring the same thing um to uh the village of Dalton. So I brought on online uh Glady, and we have a PowerPoint presentation. Hopefully, I can get it going on on Zoom. I did send it to uh trustee House as well, if he wants to share it as well uh with the with the rest of the trustees and with the mayor as well. And then what we'll be able to do is that uh from that point, Dr. Watson will then come in and speak to the science of the whole matter. Um I don't wanna just come in and just, you know, talk about, you know, what we can test and what we can do. But we wanna talk about the importance of it and actually bring some legitimacy to a lot of a lot of things that's happening um not just in Illinois, but also to our nation, and so we can stop the spread of COVID-nineteen. Glady, um go ahead and and take over from here, please.
Your mic on?
Glady, is your mic on?
Yeah, on our end, it showed that you don't have it muted, but we can't hear you. Maybe turn the volume up, maybe? Nothing. Okay. Now you, did you wanna go to Richard?
Um you know what? I'll just, is there a way that uh the media host? They said that my screen, uh the host has disabled my uh participation to share the screen. Is there any way for me to share that, or how would I be able to show this live?
Yeah, Ontario, can you share his screen so we can view what he sees?
Yeah, I'm working on it now.
Okay, thank you.
And Glady, at the same time, please, can you it must be something with your audio for your internet? Maybe you can log out Glady and come back in? It's funny how we have to do this, right? Times are challenging.
Mister Franklin, you should be able to show your screen.
Okay, awesome, thank you, here we go. Can you guys see that?
Yes.
Okay, let me make it bigger. So, um so Optimum Lab, um we have, of course, you've been doing testing across um the United States, not just here in Chicago, but across the United States. Um our mission um has been uh for us to, you know, work with companies, nursing homes are, we basically started out by um, you know, we tested not just uh COVID nineteen, but we we actually do from the whole array of medical laboratory, uh whether it be from URS all the way down to URS, the toxicology. Um and now, since the biggest piece of what's going on right now is COVID nineteen, that's been our biggest tackle. Um the importance of testing, I'll leave that up to to Dr. Watson for him to go over that. Uh there is an onboarding process that we do that makes everything uh very, very um simple. We will come out, we will deploy um our team of nurses um to, in our, in our clerical staff to come out. And what we would do from that point is that we will position and and get everyone's information from all the employees via um, you know, from Water Department, Police Department, uh Fire Department, what have you, Village Hall. And we will come in and do an onboarding of everyone's uh their information, their names and things of that nature, which we would give um the village and HR a um access to a portal. And uh that portal will actually be uh access to you guys after um that we have a medical director as well, that it be positioned and also given uh to the village as well, so that you guys can make sure that you guys stay in compliance. One thing that you guys don't want to do is that um, you know, it is violation of HIPAA law. A lot of co- a lot of companies uh they claim that they can do testing. I mean, rapid testing is good. Uh but uh no, a non-medical MB or MP cannot uh display or give out uh medical information to anyone uh if they're, if they're not medically inclined or they don't have or they're not, not a doctor or MP. Um so we do provide you guys with a uh medical personnel as well and nurses as well at each location. Um uh our process is very, very simple. We come in, one day we start doing the onboard and all we can do it right there on site, but to make sure that we don't have a bottleneck effect, we will start doing the onboarding uh prior to us coming in to do testing. Um I told you about the digital uh tra- uh transformation and and everything like that as far as with the platform, and we also have our own carrier service that will come out to the facilities and also pick up those specimens at the end of the day for testing. Uh that's for the PCR test. Uh and Dr. Watson will wi- will talk about the difference in between the rapid test, in which we will be able to perform uh with the village hall and and with the, also with all the employees that's connected to the village. Uh he'll be able to speak on on that level. And then also, uh not only will we do have the the carrier come out to come pick up the specimens, but uh, you know, five to, we say twenty-four hours just for a, just to give us uh some leeway. But uh with the PCR test, as soon as it's picked up, we'll be able to get you your test results back within four to six hours after they're picked up. Uh client support again is that if there's any issues or anything that you guys need uh or anything to to know how to make or how to uh make each patient uh feel, you know, at ease. If they do test positive, we have support for that as well via telemedicine as well. Um I'm gonna move past some of this stuff. We all know what the cases of COVID nineteen are in uh the United, or across the United States and and things of that nature. Um we also know that the, that the scale of the outbreak is is currently is is going up. We know that people right now are dealing with issues right now. Uh that's uh, we have the the Lambda variant that's been coming out as of lately, which is moving and being transmitted very uh highly, more higher than uh COVID nineteen or nor, or the Delta. The Delta variant. Uh like I told you, that the first steps, again, it will be the onboarding. Uh we will get a a standing order from our physician, and the physician that we can have could be uh Dr. Watson uh or whoever the village chooses to be um that physician onboard. Uh we would gather uh and submit all uh employees' information. We would uh specify the testing date. And then on top of that, we would also, hold on one second. I'm sorry. We will specify the testing day and then I can't go back. Hold on, let me remove this out the way. And then provide you guys with the information. So the way how we would inform each and every person is via um the way how we would inform each uh employee or each person is via, and we transmitted to the uh CDC as well as to the Illinois Department of Public Health. And then after the doctor then discusses it with um with the patient, then whoever is a part of HR, then he will let that person know as well that they're dealing with or that the symptoms of or a positive person has COVID nineteen as well. Um what we do, we'll track your symptoms. So each and every person, like I said before, we'll have a doctor that will be dealing with telemedicine, so they will track your symptoms. Uh we'll tell them what to do as far as staying indoors, isolate isolating them, telling them what regimens they need to do, whether it be rest or hydrating themselves or either going to go see a physician. Um I'm gonna pass the torch now to Dr. Watson at this time, so Dr. Watson can go ahead and talk about uh the science of this whole situation and the need for us to get tested for uh COVID and also for um and also the difference between rapid and PCR.
Okay, thanks. If I may, can I, can I chime in just a little bit? So Dr. Watson, we definitely want to hear the presentation. And can we kinda summarily go through it, not to be rude, we just have, we still have other items as well on air. And uh and I do wanna make sure that there are time for uh question and answers from the mayor, uh clerk or board members.
Certainly, certainly. I I don't have a a presentation to go through. I'll just go through some things um off the cuff, so to speak. Um uh first of all, thanks for having me, mayor. Uh Madam Mayor, good to see you again. Uh trustees, nice to meet you all. Uh some of you may remember me uh from um uh previous uh events in the area. Uh I am the CEO of Emerge Med Staffing. And we do serve the South Suburban area in partnership with IDPH and of course with Optimum Labs. Um I will just go uh into uh what we do in terms of, from the medical side. Uh we come to uh the needed defense, the needed areas and bring the medical provision. So that's the staff, the nurse. Um as Dan mentioned, the medical director, which in many cases is myself. Um we do uh rapid testing and then PCR testing, actually both at the same time. Uh we also have additional tests uh for antibodies, uh which can be discussed at a later moment. My understanding concern here is rapid and PCR. Um we take the interpretation of those results and then deliver those to the patients. Our service is full service, it's a wraparound service. So it's not just testing, it's screening, testing, treatment, prevention. So we offer everything from uh the initial screen to the vaccination to actual treatment with antibody therapy to those who need it. We also do telemedicine follow-ups on all these patients. So it's a three sixty or wraparound service that we have built and provided since the pandemic broke uh in uh, well, at least hit the states in late February of twenty twenty. And so, without further ado, I don't wanna take up too much time, but I do wanna let you know what kind of services you can get and expect uh what we uh engage with uh townships such as yourself. Uh and again, you can check with other townships such as Hazel Crest and Dol- excuse me, not Dol- Burnham, uh Folsom or Chicago Heights uh and others that we've done uh uh screening and partnered with uh over the past year.
Um um can you hear me now? This is Glady from Optimal Lab, Care Advocate. Thank, thank you. I'm so sorry for the technical difficulties. But um I know that Dan took care of the presentation and that Dr. Watson pretty much um answered all the questions, cuz we did receive your feedback. Um Madam Mayor, um and thank you for that. Um Dr. Watson, do you have a copy of it? Because I believe that I would like for you to address the first one, which is um regarding the antigen uh blood test.
I I don't have a copy of it, but you can shoot any question you want.
Okay, so, so um their concern is that we are not offering the more accurate antigen blood test, but only the the nose or saliva, so the PCR oral and nasal.
Okay, so that's a, that's a, that's a legit uh question, but I think you have to understand um the place of each test. So the rapid test is an important test. It has its limitations, and the rapid test should be accompanied by a a confirmatory PCR test. What do I mean by that? Well, the rapid test is excellent if you have symptoms between days two and and we can go as far as ten days, okay? We all know that the virus can um um inflict its damage anywhere from day one to day fourteen. So you can go fourteen days of being asymptomatic and on the fourteenth day become symptomatic, okay? Rapid test is great in that time period between days two and and day ten. You can get a negative rapid test on a positive person on the day, the first day of infection. You can get a negative rapid test on a positive patient on day eleven. The PCR confirmatory will pick up that negative test, okay? That's where uh the strength of the, the way we do tests comes in. Now, there may be some times during the screening where I may indicate to um uh the testers that uh I want an antibody test, and that's just a third type of test, but it gives us almost a complete picture of what's going on with those individuals. Is that all the time? No. But again, there is the benefit of the screening process, okay? It's not just a blind test where you stick up, you know, something of somebody's nose and you know, you get a result and nobody knows what to do with that result. There's medical knowledge behind this, there's medical interpretation behind it.
Um thank you, Dr. Watson. And then I just wanna address number three and number four in your letter to us um regarding the um testing um in facilities. We will be going out to whichever facilities um you would want us to go to and um with enough employees to take care, enough clinicians to take care of your employees. Um same goes for number seven regarding the kits. We will handle the kits um and the supplies, um including the couriers, so that you would not have to worry. And then number nine, um the concern about Dalton residents. Um I do know from uh that Dr. Watson and Dr. Watson, you correct me if I'm wrong, that we will be hiring um clinicians from Dalton, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we love to hire local, so um you know, if there's any, any persons um who are interested in working um in Dalton, um we can absolutely, you know, bring them on staff. And what we do is not just bring them on staff, but we'll bring them on staff and give them the proper orientation and and training. Uh if it's, I'm sorry, you gotta go ahead.
I'm sorry, from my end, um from Care Advocates, and Care Advocate is the staffing agency. We're licensed by um the Illinois um Department of um Labor um and also IDPH. I do, we do have over two hundred fifty people out in the field, um nurses, CNAs, LPNs. And we do have a lot of um uh clinicians that are from Dalton. So if we would need to hire more, we will.
And just to, and just to address that other thing as well, and it's not, it won't just be for the city of Dalton, but we have other testing sites that we're doing testing in, not just here in Illinois, but across the country. So this is, this will be a lo- a ongoing effort for us to employ uh those clinicians that are in the village of Dalton, where they can also work either whether wanna be, whether it be in hu- in home healthcare, whether it be in staffing and working at, and working at nursing homes, whether it be with uh going and doing emergency room uh medicines uh with uh Dr. Watson and whatnot. Dr. Watson has spent a number of years as a emergency room doctor and still uh works uh right now with Franciscan. Uh as of today is uh as is on staff and on staff doctor.
Let me just say that we we staff Franciscan, Bingle, uh South Suburban, uh Rush, et cetera, et cetera. So we, and we have three emerg- the urgent cares as well. So when I say we're looking for people, we're always looking for people, so.
Okay, so I got a couple of questions um as relates to what tests are you currently conducting? What, which tests?
Currently, we're using, we use a uh rapid antigen test.
Okay.
We use an antibody test.
Okay.
And we use a PCR test. So there's only three tests. We do all three.
Okay.
Is that what blood, is that what prick in the finger?
The antigen, excuse me, the antibody is the, is the prick of the, of the finger. Now, for, for, for rapid testing, you know, um excuse me, for testing required by the government, that is not one of them. But I mentioned that earlier, however, because in some particular cases, there's a question that's is still posed after the screening and that test will answer the question for us.
So, so what ma- manufacturer does this test? Like the blood test?
Which, which manufacturer for the antibody test?
Yeah.
Um I would have to look, um I, I would have to look in the office and see which, which one we're using. We only select ones that are EUA um a- approved and that have a, a confidence or ninety-five or above uh uh specificity in terms of uh specificity and sensitivity, in terms of how well that test is uh gonna be accurate.
Okay, so you're saying now that one's ninety-five percent accuracy?
Um I believe the one we have right now is ninety-six and ninety-four.
So which, we break it down, I mean, the antibody is ninety-six and the rapid is ninety-four?
Ninety-six percent sensitive, ninety-four percent specific. I, I, I wanna say this less scientifically, um it's, it's, let's just say it's correct, at least ninety, ninety-five percent of the time.
Okay, and when was the EUA approved?
The EUA was approved of that in twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty. Okay, and was this FDA approved?
The only one that's FDA approved right now is the anti, uh the antigen test that we're using.
Okay, and then your results, when do we get them back? Is it um same day?
With, with the antibody and the rapid test, you get them back in fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes. Okay.
So they, whoever gets tested will have paperwork with them at that point uh before they leave the uh facility.
Okay, and then I see that you have a medical director, so you, you're going to have one? Cuz I know on the, some when we read it, it was saying that we had to provide it?
Well, I mean, I, I serve as a medical director for, for all of our COVID sites, but if you have your own, it's no, you know, you're, you're welcome to, to use that person.
No, 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 oh no. We not gonna do it. I'm just making sure that you're gonna do it. I know, we're not gonna do anything.
No, I, I, I serve as the medical director.
So you'll be there. Okay, and then how many nurses?
We have a staff, well, our nursing staff is currently at fifteen. And um our MAs are at twenty. But we're, like, like I said, you know, i- in Dalton, it would be great to have uh I know you guys, you know, requested that we use, trust me, we would love to, 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 to have people from Dalton working in Dalton. Would make uh things really good for us. Every time we open up, we bring on new employees. And so um it's an opportunity to, to really expand and uh increase the workforce.
Okay, what's the name of the test that you get?
BiX now.
BiX?
BiX.
B I O?
B I A N X, BiX, and then Care Start.
Care, care, C A R E?
Mm-hmm, start.
Okay.
And then the antibodies, I gotta, I gotta, I'm not in the uh uh the Hazel Crest office right now, where we store those, but I'd have to go in there and, and look for you.
Okay, and then are you billing the staff or how are you doing with billing?
We, we are part of, we're a part of CARES Act. So how CARES Act works is anybody who has insurance, uh insurance has to pay for their, their testing, no matter how frequent it is. Anyone who doesn't have insurance just needs to prove that they are a citizen, so they have to have a license or a social security number. So they have to have a license or a social security number and CARES Act will pay for their tests.
Okay, so you have to wait to be reimbursed.
Correct, yeah. So that means that there's zero cost that will come to the village of Dalton.
Okay, and how much is each billing to the insurance?
I I I, I don't know, to be honest with you. I know that uh CARES Act uh pays the same rate as as Medicaid, and so that's variable.
Okay.
I don't, I don't do the billing directly.
Okay, what what, give me like an estimate, like of most towns, when they do this, what is the cost to the resident? Is it two hundred dollars, is it five hundred dollars, like what's the numbers?
To the resident, it's nothing, because we're part of CARES.
For an insurance, so you're still getting paid, I know it's nothing upfront, but you're getting paid because you're charging their insurance.
Yeah, it could be, like I said, it it's it's through, it's a Medicaid rate. So that could be variable, anywhere from twenty-five dollars to to sixty-five dollars, depending upon which um which uh insurance or Medicaid um MCO that that is they're associated with.
And let me just make this clear to Madam Mayor is that um, just so I can get, make sure the question is correct, you're asking what would be the cost from the from the resident? Again, that there won't, even though we're billing the insurance and also we're billing uh for those that don't have insurance, the CARES Act, there is no deductible that would be included in that cost or anything like that. So it it'd be completely free for every single person that gets tested. The village doesn't have to have, doesn't have to have a back portion where they have to pay on the backside or anything like that. It's completely a hundred percent government funded. Right now, if you chose to go get a test right now, if you felt like, you know what, I've been around somebody with COVID nineteen, you can go to Ingles Hospital, you can go to uh any urgent care in Flossmoor, not even in your village, and go get tested right now and you will not be charged. I mean, there's anybody that's trying to charge you.
Well, that let me, let me interrupt for a second, because they have to be a part of the CARES Act.
Right, they have to be a part of the CARES.
We are a part of the CARES Act, not everybody's a part of the CARES Act. If you go to somebody who's not part of the CARES Act, you get a bill, a regular bill.
Correct, so by us being a part of the CARES Act, then that means that you won't, the the uh the city will not receive any any charge or anything like that. And that um, you know, they don't have to even be a part of the community or live in the community for. So we don't want to just, you know, just test even just the employees of the village. But if there's any, we want to be a a a beacon of light to also to the citizens of Dalton as well, where they can come in and come and get tested as well.
Okay, okay, well, I am in total agreement as it relates to everyone should get tested. Uh, my concern is the billing. Uh, if somebody don't have insurance, like you just stated, then they will get a bill. And my other concern as relates to my staff here is that I want them to get a turnaround right away, because I don't want them to come in contact with um the residents or any other staffers and everybody's sick. I want them to know right then and there if they're sick, so then they can go quarantine right away, because most companies come before us and they say that we have to wait twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours before we know if a person is ill. And now that person have affected all of us. That's another reason why we do uh Zoom, because right now we have to be cautious of everyone's health, so.
Let me just say one more thing.
Doc, before you go there, and I also want to just say this also, Madam Mayor, is that that's the reason why we're performing both the rapid testing for those people that do display symptoms, but then also we're going to do the PCR testing as well, just to make sure that we back it up. Because, Doc, if you could, um, the accuracy on the PCR testing uh for a person that's asymptomatic, that we don't know that has a uh COVID nineteen, um, you know, the PCR test does give us those results versus uh the rapid testing, correct?
Correct.
I I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
What 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 defines a person to be part of the CARES Act? You said, if you're not part of the CARES Act.
Yeah, so I want to, I want to clarify that, because I I want to make sure that uh Madam Mayor has um, she said something and I I want to make sure it was, we're all clear on it. If you don't have insurance, because we, Emergent Man Stamping, Optima Lab, are part of the CARES Act, you have to register with the government to be a part of the CARES Act. If a citizen uh A comes to us with no insurance, they will be taken care of and they won't be billed. So I I wanted to make sure that was, that was safe, because it sounded like you said, if you don't have insurance, you won't get a test. No, it it doesn't matter if you have insurance. If you have insurance, what what the CARES Act does, if, let's say you have insurance, but you don't know what your insurance is, the CARES Act will find whatever insurance that you're listed under and bill that insurance. If there is no insurance that you're listed under, the CARES Act will compensate for that test based upon Medicaid rates. And you as the person, the CARES Act is about you as the person not having to worry about whether or not you can be tested or not.
Right, but what I'm asking is, you just said that if they don't have insurance, they find a rate. Who pays for that? Does that go to the?
Government, no, it does, no, it does not. No, not, the United States government pays for that test.
If they don't have insurance.
As long as you are a citizen, as long as you are a citizen of the United States, if you have a social security number attached to your name, you can get tested for no cost to you. That's what the CARES Act states. Now, it's a little different from vaccines. If somebody wants a vaccine, which we also supply, if someone wants a vaccine, you don't have to be a citizen. All you have to have is ID.
Hmm, okay, so why not to have a price as it relates to what you're gonna charge um the people as well as to the insurance? You don't have a number?
We don't, we don't, we don't set the prices, because we're part of the CARES Act, CARES Act gives us what they give us, and that's, that's pretty much it.
Right, so if it's sixty bucks, then we're just gonna walk away with sixty dollars?
Okay, right, you know, I understand that, so I'm saying you guys do other towns, that's what you just stated, right? So what is the dollar amount that you get when you bill people insurance? So I know where my communities from to get charged, what's the dollar amount?
The community doesn't get charged, the community doesn't get charged anything. However many people that we test, we're gonna get paid from the CARES Act from that. We don't, we're not gonna bill the community a single red cent, a dollar. You're not gonna get, because the care, the government pays us to do the test.
Right, I get that, so I'm saying the government pays you to do the test, because it goes through the insurance, I ain't talking about the people that don't have insurance. How much are you billing the insurance company?
Even through the insurance company, even through the insurance company, it's still covered underneath the CARES Act. So that even with the billable rate, there is no copay, there is no spend down, there's no other payment that will be, that will be charged to any, any resident, any employee, to the village, to you, to anyone.
I guess, hey, I'm gonna leave it alone, hold on, one minute, trustee, and I'm gonna leave it alone, because I'm gonna answer my question. My question to you guys is how much will a resident get charged when you bill the insurance? Sixty dollars, a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, that's all I want to know. I understand you saying that they won't get billed um out of pocket, but I want to know how much is the insurance company paying for the test? That's it, but I'll give the floor to anyone else, any other trustees?
Yes, yes, I understand, I I understand what uh the mayor is asking is what's the actual price that's going to get billed, that you get paid for? The question I have is uh in this state, in this, you know, there's vaccinated versus unvaccinated. I know people who have got vaccinated and still spreading and still got it. So is it, or is there gonna be, is it, is it something that you come once a week and is it for everybody? Or we're just gonna single out the people who have a religious exemption, who don't take the vaccine? We just single them people out and say, test them, or we testing everybody? Because everybody's a potential carrier, whether you vaccinated or unvaccinated.
Doc, I mean, that's, that's up to you, you guys. Whoever you designate to be tested is who we're coming to test. Whoever lines up and says I want to test, gets to test. It's, it's completely, that part is 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 up to your discretion. If you're mandating your employees and workers um get tested, they they line up and and we will test it, there's not anybody that we're gonna turn away and say, well, we're not testing it. Um, in regards to the question regarding, you know, how much the 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 insurance gets billed, uh, that question actually is is requires more explanation than than this conversation can hold, because medical billing is not straightforward billing. I can bill an insurance company five hundred dollars and get paid five dollars. So it's, it's a very complicated formula regarding that. So much so that I have, um, we have uh billing for the past eight, nine months that we have not been paid for, because we don't know how much we're gonna get.
Right, and worries me for my residents, I'm just telling you, because I would never agree to something and I don't know what the bill is going to be. Regardless of, I know you're saying I'm not paying out of pocket, I get it. But still, you're billing my insurance, I'd like to know the cost for the overall residents. When they ask me, I don't have an answer. You're not telling me anything, and you're not giving me any examples of other towns or communities as it relates to what they pay. Like, I I I have no, no base to go off of, and that's what I'm asking for. But, go ahead, any other trustee?
Yeah, may I be recognized?
Go, go ahead, trustee, hold on, then we'll come to you, trustee House.
Oh, you know what? Oh, yeah, I just had a quick question. I mean, oh, I just, uh, for doc, for the doctor, I just want to make sure, because I think that I'm understanding, but I just want some clarity. So it sounds like uh he's stating that because he's a part of the CARES Act, if he uses insurance, then the insurance gets billed. Um, but if he uses, if the person doesn't have insurance, either way through the CARES Act, the government is paying for the test, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, so I guess the the ultimate answer, why you all are saying you can't answer with a number, because you're saying, hey, for the most part, because we're doing the billing and because we're part of CARES Act, either way, the government is pretty much paying for it in one way or the other.
Correct.
Okay.
Ultimately, the government does enforce that insurance companies have to pay for the test if the, if the person's insured. They do enforce that. If there is no, like you said, if there is no insurance company, like you said, then the government pays for it, yes.
Got it, and that is, that is what, what, why you all are saying, hey, this is free, either way, it won't cost.
Correct, right.
Thank.
We are just now starting to see, just this month, starting to see receipts come back from January of this year.
Just got you, so you all are compensated either way, but this is a a free service to the residents of Dalton and the employees.
Eventually, we will be compensated, yes.
Got it, thank you, that's what I was wondering, okay. Appreciate it.
Okay, uh, trustee Norwood covered it.
Okay, any other questions?
One, one, one more question. Uh, you say, uh, people who do get uh contract COVID nineteen or coronavirus, y'all help, y'all help out with some therapies? Or help out with, with saying, what's some of the therapies that you actually help out, that you have?
Well, we do telemedicine visits um that we will have in place for um anyone that, you know, contracts COVID. And then, Doc, uh, talk about, you know, the telemedicine as well as um with the uh the therapy regimen that you have as well.
Yeah, so in our clinic, our COVID clinic in Hazel Crest, we're doing antibody therapy. And that right now is the FDA, EUA approved treatment, previously restricted to inside the hospital. And now they have allowed for um treatment uh in our, in our COVID uh clinics. And so uh that is the most up-to-date uh treatment available for for COVID nineteen. You may have recalled antibody therapy given, being given to the former president and and his staff when he got sick. And that is what allowed him to recover within, you know, two, two days, excuse me. And so that is the most up-to-date uh treatment. Uh, we've been doing telemedicine and sort of symptomatic care, up to the point where we um got the FDA approval for these uh antibody uh therapies.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Which, by the way, is also taken care of by the CARES.
CARES Act.
Treatment. That I can tell you the price of, that I know, that is a four hundred and fifty dollar uh treatment that is taken care of by the government.
Is that the monoclonal?
That is the monoclonal antibodies, that's correct.
Okay, my other question was for um, just to clear the insurance thing up, if the insurance don't pay, then the CARES Act's covered, right?
Correct.
Right.
Okay, and then as it relates to, is it Abbott, maybe I'm saying it wrong, well, Abbott Labs, is that it?
Optima Labs.
Optima Labs, is it?
Yes.
Not that, um, I'm trying to, I'm going over my notes. So I wrote a bunch of notes right here for you. Um, you wrote in here that we had to do the test, I guess, when they do the swabs or whoever be here, and then someone has to pick it up?
Correct, so the, so, no, you guys will not have to perform any tests. Uh, as was stated previously, we would deploy a staff of nurses, clinicians, um, or uh MAs as well to uh each, each facility, whether it be at the village hall, if you want them done, if you want us to test at all the locations, we could have so that there won't be any bottlenecks, so that people won't run late for work or do anything, they won't have, there won't be no, there there will not be any waiting. We'll be able to have staff at the, at the fire department, staff at the police department, staff at the water department, staff at, at the village hall, wherever you guys want staff, we'll be able to have staff there throughout all the shifts or the hours, if you guys want them to be there, they'll come in and test. Once a week, we'll be able to know uh one with the fifteen-minute rapid testing. We'll also have the antigen testing as well, as well as the PCR test will be available. So we'll perform three tests, all that, all that those, at those uh designated locations. And um they'll be able, and and our staff will take care of all of that. So you don't, we don't, and and the only thing that we would ask for the, from the village is that you guys just send us over employees or or MAs, nurses, uh, emergency room, uh, uh, what is it? Uh, uh, EMTs, they want to come and work or anything like that, they can come and work with us and we can employ them. That's the only thing we require from the village, and we'll cover the payroll, we're not asking for the village to pay for it or anything like that. Our company will pay for, we are a multi-million dollar corporation. Uh, we, uh, Dr. Watson, himself, myself, and uh and Gladie, we all, we we have a multi-million dollar corporation that we own.
Okay, all right, any other questions from the board? Okay, moving forward, um, can you do a consensus to see if the board would like to move this to the next um board meeting?
Okay, motion to move forward to the November the first board meeting, uh, trustee Steve?
Yes, aye.
Trustee Norwood?
Let's move forward.
Trustee Belcher?
Aye.
Trustee Holmes?
Aye, keep going.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee House?
Yes.
Motion passed to move forward to the November first board meeting.
All right, thank you so much, guys.
Thank you so much.
See you next time.
All right, you're clear.
Hi, guys.
Next on the agenda is uh the action uh related to contract to hire Agile Technology LLC to perform weekly COVID nineteen testing of unvaccinated Village of Dalton employees, unless an employee has a religious or medical um situation. Uh, where is he at, is he on here?
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry, oh, God, oh, my eyes, uh, Rod, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. Uh, thank you, Mayor and trustees and other department heads and such. So Agile Technologies has been providing uh rapid or COVID testing to the south suburbs. We have location at River Oaks Mall, so we're already part of the uh, part of the community. And uh I'll put it this way, we don't have to guess about some very, very key things. This is not a, uh, respectfully, everybody, this is not just a financial decision, this uh or or conversation, this is a public health decision. Um, and you, you have to have a discussion about protocols, about methodologies, and about processes. It is completely insufficient for uh to not know which test is going to be administered. Uh, our tests were approved on May twenty-ninth and I believe October third. We have two of the only tests that were approved for point of care. That means that they are so accurate that it requires a low com- low complexity environment. Um, we give the results in ten minutes. That means that when someone um is infected, that we're going to give them the results right there on the spot and they should be escorted from the environment and and given proper um advice on isolation. Um, and if they, if they need to uh inform people at home or if people at work need to be informed as well. So you can't say we're gonna send out results and then we're, you know, we're gonna do this other thing as as well. Um, and not have a a a way of uh keeping things safe even in the test environment. So we do not have an onboarding process. We do it really easily, everybody. It's a free phone app and everyone gets a link. They download it to their phone. Um, they put in a bit of information. And when their test result is ready in ten minutes, it's loaded into their phone app and they have it right away. They can use that for going, going back, proving up, uh, their status so they can go to work, so they can go to school, even so that they have that for travel. Uh, it's extremely important that we do not have an onboarding process or anything that puts people in unsafe, uh, unsafe circumstances. One of the things that Agile does is, we have, uh, of course, there's going to be social distancing. In addition to that, we're gonna have air purification units in place in the testing environment, uh, for, for, for everyone's safety. In addition to that, we're going to have someone on site, ensuring that everyone who's getting tested walks in the door and keeps a mask on at all times. We're gonna make sure that people are separated or bifurcated, uh, when they are tested, when they get their test results as well. It's extremely important, um, that we're able to give the type of tests that we do um, for something that was not, uh, talked about earlier. So I'm gonna give you a couple statistics. Up to forty to forty-five percent of people who have COVID are asymptomatic. What was not discussed is that a PCR test misses asymptomatic carriers up to eighty-six percent of the time. If you all go back in your memory bank, and I'll talk about the most, uh, famous ones. The Binax Now or Abbott's Lab tests were the ones that were used at the White House when they came, when they had the super spreader events. Um, it was then discussed that that test was up to forty-eight percent inaccurate. So let's be very, very clear. Our tests are ninety-eight plus percent accurate. Uh, so by doing the two tests, we can eliminate statistically false positives and false negatives. And the specificity on both tests is one hundred percent. A PCR test cannot differentiate be- between, uh, certain pathogens and certain other findings. Um, so that, that's, that's, that's part of what's going on. It also sounds like, um, uh, in doing the homework, uh, I want to be careful about, um, representing us well and allowing that other company to represent themselves well. But if you're gonna talk about jobs creation, uh, and economic development, please let it be authentic. We already hire people from the community. We're already come, members of the community in the River Oaks Mall. Um, we will be providing testing on an as-needed basis Monday through Friday, uh, at village-designated locations. And then on Saturdays and Sundays, we have the River Oaks Mall location, uh, where individuals can come. It's extremely important, um, that everyone is tested at the same time as well. So the hundred and seventy-two employees must be tested at the same time, otherwise it will open the village up to litigation, um, because you will be co-mingling infected with the uninfected and the vaccinated with the unvaccinated. Please understand this, that because of the Delta variant, which, which is actually responsible for more than ninety-eight percent of the, the infections, it's not Lambda, it's not Mu, it's not Kappa, Kappa, it's, it's the Delta variant right now. Um, it carries up to a thousand times more the viral load in the mouth, the nose, and then the body as well. So we have to be extremely careful about the advice that we give people and the timeliness of that. So we're gonna make sure that if someone comes in, they are tested, they are identified, whether, whether they have the virus or not. The second thing, folks, is that to truly understand if someone is ready to come back to work, ready to go back to school, uh, or if you have an employee with people who are sick at home, it requires a second test because there is an incubation period. So two tests are what are required on different dates to actually establish a ne- a negative status. Not one individual test. Let's be very clear. PCR testing misses asymptomatic carriers up to eighty-six percent of the time. PCR testing, which is the one that is painful and goes up into the nasal ca- the sinus cavity, is good for a seven-day period when individuals have symptoms. But almost half of people do not have symptoms. There's another part of the, let, and let's be very, uh, pointed on the health discussion as well. An antibody test must be done on everyone at the beginning. And that is because a person has to be not exposed or completely recovered to be vaccinated. Only under those circumstances will the body mount a proper response. So that is why we do both of those tests immediately. That is how we will increase the number of vaccinated people as well. So ultimately, we want to drive down the cost. And in terms of cost, I can address that very simply. Uh, I'm not looking at whatever the proposal says, but I think it's one hundred dollars for both tests or something like that. Yes, that is the cap. That's it. A lot of labs and companies, and I will provide the articles, have been billing the government and insurance companies, three, five, seven hundred, or even thousands of dollars per test. Simply put, folks, we are in this for public safety. We're in this to do good business. It is simply not a good business model not to say I'm not gonna be paid for eighty-nine months and I'm okay with that. You can't sustain a business well on that, on that. You all shouldn't even want a vendor, um, who's not going to, um, how can I say? Want to, uh, want to be paid for their services. The other thing is, uh, if we're gonna have a discussion about, um, local, local hiring, we're gonna be paying twenty dollars per hour. I've stated that weeks ago. Um, and I state that consistently now. That's gonna be for the people doing test administration. We have locations at River Oaks Mall and a five thousand foot square, uh, square foot facility at Ford City Mall that is a testing and will be a training center as well. Uh, let me stop for a moment and, um, and, uh, answer any questions that anyone might have.
Anybody got any questions for Rod?
Ma'am, may I be recognized?
Sure, go ahead, Trustee.
Yeah, so I actually have used, uh, Rod's facility when, um, I, uh, my players and myself to his facility in River Oaks. And, um, I actually like the facility. I guess what, what I'm wondering is, wh- what's like, what's the, uh, cost? So how would the billing work, uh, with you all?
Absolutely. So I wanna, I wanna not be shy about something, folks. Hundreds of billions of dollars have been allocated for COVID testing and COVID safety concerns, some of which we haven't even talked about. So you got the, the, uh, art money for this. So it's, I, I believe it's gonna be one hundred dollars for both tests. We are going to bill the insurance. Whatever we bill that insurance for will be paid back to the village, folks. So that addresses a large part of the financial concern. That way, we try to make it a zero-sum, uh, expenditure for the, for the village in, in as many ways as possible. But, but I'm gonna be really honest with you, because of all of you all who like to go out to a restaurant and you like steak or lobster or this or that, the other, when's the last time that you went and sought the best food for free? When's the last time that you went to a restaurant and they couldn't tell you where, where, what they were serving you and how safe it was? We administer tests that are FDA-approved under the emergency use authorization. One is an antibody test, one is an antigen test. They were pr- approved specifically on May twenty-ninth and October third, and they are two of the only tests, folks. Again, that are approved for point of care service. That is outside of a hospital, an urgent care facility or other. That's extremely important. Um, and I can actually, I think I've given you all, uh, power, uh, PowerPoint presentation or brochures or such with the accuracy of the, of the test, which is more than ninety-eight percent for both tests. Um, one is Helgen Scientific and the other is Access, uh, is, uh, Access Bio. So those are the two specific tests that we're using. And Trustee Norwood, again, on the cost, I believe it's a, a hundred dollars per person for both tests. I believe it's sixty-five dollars or something like, or ninety-five dollars for both, maybe sixty-five or seventy dollars for one test. Um, and then again, we do bill the insurance. We are transparently going to, uh, provide that information to the village, so you can see what we are billing and what we are paid. And we're going to pay the village back what it pays, either credit or, or such. Uh, I want to address a couple things really, really quickly, folks. Um, specifically in the, in the plant, in the safety planning. Uh, law enforcement, as far as police officers, uh, this is so detrimental that it's, that it's not. Police officers have died from COVID five times more than they have died under other circumstances. That's number one. In terms of compliance with the Department of Labor, there is a fourteen thousand dollar fine for each person for each occurrence. So say for instance, you all missed getting results, they're miss- mistesting for a week or something like that. The potential fine for a hundred and seventy-two employees is two point four million dollars, actually, two million four hundred thousand, uh, four hundred eight thousand dollars. Um, we want to be clear about something as well. Um, everyone remanded into custody by the police department should be tested for their own safety and for the safety of the community and the police officers. Then it would also be their choice, uh, that police officers could be test, uh, could be te- could be tested on a more regular basis. And that individuals who are released from custody should be tested as well. Uh, that's something in particular. Uh, it is extremely critical to get same-day results, not twenty-four hours, not processed in four to six hours. So if you take a look at, um, the white papers or the documentation for the companies that do PCR testing, what they do not tell you is that they should, they have, they're supposed to be processed within one hour of, of the sample being taken. Otherwise, that compromises the results. And there are many other, uh, circumstances under which the results are compromised. That is an impossibility with us, simply because we don't need a lab. We're gonna have everything processed right on site. But I, you know what, I, I did want to, uh, just stop and make sure that I addressed. This is a, a good way, the way that we plan to do it, I believe, is a good way to increase the percentage of vaccinated people. I believe about a month ago, that percentage in Dalton was about twenty-eight percent or something like that. In the state of Illinois, I believe it's about fifty-two or fifty-three percent. We need to get that percentage up in the, up in the eighties, folks. And unfortunately, the longer, uh, that the number of unvaccinated people stays very high, that presents particular peril, uh, to the, to the Village of Dalton and surrounded areas, surrounding areas as well.
I have a question, uh, Madam Mayor, can I be recognized?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. What's the cost to a individual who doesn't have insurance?
None whatsoever. Uh, it would be under, under what we've presented. Um, it will be paid by the village uh, through the, through the, uh, ARP funds, through the recovery, uh, plan funds, and then reimbursed. There will be no billing to the individual. So if we were billing the insurance for that individual, uh, not under, under these circumstances, it is very likely that that individual will, will get a bill. However, the individual will never get a bill, period.
So you're using funds that were given to the village and then you're gonna reimburse them?
Absolutely. And we're gonna provide either bi-weekly or monthly reports of that. We're gonna be extremely transparent because, like I said, I can provide you many articles where companies were, uh, billing hmm, in between, I, I, I hate, I hate to even say the amounts, upwards of three hundred, five hundred, seven hundred, in some cases, thousands of dollars for each test. We are not going to gouge the, the individual, uh, residents. We are not going to gouge the village. Um, because, look, for the, for the village to move forward successfully, the most important thing at this point is a foundation of sound public health policies and protocols. Um, that's something that we can support and we can support it on a seven-day basis. Again, with giving the most accurate information, the fastest in the, uh, in, uh, in testing sites that are gonna be protected by air purification units. And then there's some, there's, there's other options that we have as well, um, that are extremely affordable in terms of, um, having air, air purification installed into the village hall, the police de- department or other buildings as needed, because, um, COVID is something that we can track through, uh, through respiration. And it does travel between floors and, and the, uh, air, the air duct system. And that's something that has not even been discussed. It's an option. Um, it's something that will bear, uh, a, a, a great amount of good results for you all in terms of public safety.
One more question. So the air purifiers, what's the cost to the village?
Uh, the individual portable, portable units that handle approximately two thousand square feet are in the neighborhood of two thousand dollars. Because of the global demand, um, the prices have been changing just a bit. We would do it, you know, as, as much toward, you know, close to cost as possible. And then it's approximately thirty, I want to say thirty to fifty cents per square foot for, per each building as far as the HVAC-based, uh, air purification. It's, that's important, um, because that's the way of keeping an environment safe all the time. You have to have multiple layers of protection. So testing is the first. Number, well, wearing a mask, of course, the air purification units. And then we have even, we even have individually worn devices which are bipolar ionization devices which damage the, the membrane of coronavirus and render it unable to, uh, infect an individual. Or, uh, it creates clusters around the coronavirus, um, cell and makes it larger so it cannot fit through, uh, an, an N-ninety-five mask. So again, N-ninety-five masks are, will be provided to the people that we test as well. That's not something that anybody has talked about uh, as well. They should not be the three-ply surgical masks. They should not be the fashion masks, uh, in everybody. The bling and the Gucci and the Louis Vuitton masks are cute, uh, but they don't serve very much of a, of a safety purpose. So we're gonna make sure that everybody has the most, uh, the, the best, uh, mask to, to wear as soon as they step in for testing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mayor, if I can be recognized? Okay, so my question is, because I, I think we heard the previous presentation in yours. Are you stating that the previous company is not qualified? Um, because I, I think I heard both, both companies will do all three tests, antigen, PCR and, and the third one. Are you stating they're not qualified or kinda help me out here?
Uh, well, I, I can't speak to their qualifications because I don't know their individual credentials, but it, I, I'll tell you this. Shouldn't it caution you if somebody can't even tell you what test they're using, when it was approved, if it was approved for a point of care? What is, and how specifically accurate it is, not in generalities. I could pull that up on the screen. I don't have to guess. I don't have to go to another facility. This is something that we do every day. I take it this seriously because we're doing one simple thing that is simple and profound. We are here to save lives and improve the quality of life. So to answer your question, uh, Trustee House, I can't say whether they're not qualified, but I'll, but honestly, um, there was too much that was, that was ambiguous, uh, and it sound, sounded like it was being made up as you go along, and that's, that's unacceptable.
Okay. Well, and I'll say that because my, my assessment or what I'm looking at is I feel like we have two qualified, uh, companies. Uh, one that builds through the CARES Act, so that is no cost to the village, and then one that will build a village and then go for insurance and reimburse us as much as possible.
So I, I'll, I'll say, I'll say this, uh, uh, Trustee House, there is a way for both, for both companies to be engaged. Uh, we do not do antibody th- uh, therapy. So say for instance, if Agile is doing the testing and we're identifying people who need to be isolated, uh, who may have health problems, uh, right away, then they may be candidates for, uh, for the antibody therapy and, and, and other treatments. Um, I think companies should really I think companies should really stay in the lane that, that, that they are best at, do the thing that they are most expert at. Um, for instance, there was absolutely no discussion of the need for testing, um, because of long-haul illnesses. We thought that it was ten percent of people who got COVID. Now we find out through an Oxford in United States study that almost thirty-three percent of people who get COVID, within three to six months, they develop one of the long-haul illnesses, which is atrial fibrillation, uh, cardiomyopathy, bilateral pneumonia, vascular damage, blood clotting, stroke, paralysis, and a number of other things. So the power in what we're doing is number one, testing everybody every week. Number two, if anybody comes up positive, we are able to address it on the spot, not through telemedicine. We're able to advise them immediately. And you don't have to wonder about who our medical director is because it's Dr. Here in Natalia, someone who's, uh, qualified, who actually provides COVID care in all states, uh, at this point. And everyone that we have, uh, is, uh, licensed and certified as a phlebotomist, a CNA, or a medical assistant or such. You know, those credentials have to be in place, but I want to be very, very, very clear. Just because a company says they do testing, that's one thing. If I say, I'm gonna give you something to drink, I should tell you what's in the bottle. I can't just say I give, I give you a PCR or an antigen or another test. I have to tell you exactly which test it is, so you know that it's most useful, that it's most, that it's most accurate. And the tests that we, that we do have been proven to be best-in-class because they are approved not just for emergency use authorization, but for POC or Point of Care Service, which is, uh, extremely important to you all and your safety. So there, you know, there, there's a way for, for, for both, uh, to participate. One, in turn, in terms of treatments and such, um, but we are very expert. We, we've already, in fact, you know, uh, many of the people here have, uh, seen how we do testing and such. And, you know, like I said, hiring from the community is something that we already, I don't have to speak about it hypothetically because we, we already have people on the payroll and have had people on the payroll from the community.
Any other questions? You, you muted, uh, Trustee.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, Mayor, may I be recommend, recognized? I guess, um, just for clarity purposes, I, I just want to make sure that I understand. So, um, this way with you all's company, we'll use the COVID Relief Fund as opposed to the CARES Act and they'll count on, you all account on reimbursement. Correct?
No, we would, so we would, so we would, uh, be paid, we would build a village, to be very specific. Then we would bill the insurance or Medicare or whomever. Those reimbursements will be paid back to the village. And here's something I don't want to be extremely careful about as well, folks. What we want to do is decrease the need for testing over time. We are not going to give two or three tests to everybody every time. That, that will be gouging you all. That will be making you all like ATM cards, that's not right. If somebody is vaccinated, they do not need an active virus test all the time. They need an antibody test to understand how long they have antibodies in their system to protect them. We have one of the most accurate tests to do so. So once a person no longer has antibodies or a very low antibody finding, then they should get the booster shot or the additional dose. That's part of the, the, the value and what we bring in, in the discussion that's not been had. If people are exposed to an infected person, we address it on the spot immediately. Depen- depending whether it's eight o'clock in the morning or eight o'clock at night, we can test those individuals who have been exposed and give those results right away. You know what, um, there's, uh, someone that, in, in fact, earlier today, Colin Powell, uh, died. Former Joint Chiefs of Staff, Secretary of State, very beloved man. He found out, I believe it was just days ago that he had COVID. So he did not have time for results to take days. The decision that you all are making respectfully is less of a financial decision and more of a public health decision. You can guard money as, as much as you want to, but I pray that you all guard lives. I really do. And as far as the residents, as far as, look, third-grade boys who underperform on, on standardized tests are eleven times more likely to be incarcerated. Nobody's talking about that. That's why it's so important to keep kids in school and keep them safe. If you all want to talk about the financial health of your community, then doggone it, businesses need to have people who are working for them that haven't, that have been tested and will not spread COVID. You all can have a community of safe businesses and safe consumers as well. That's what we talk about when we talk about economic development. I'm not talking about, uh, we're a multimillion-dollar company who's from coast to coast. Yeah, we've done work in a number of other states and stuff like that. I'm local, I'm committed to, to what we have been doing in Chicago and the South suburbs. That's who we are. We are doggone good at that for the people that we've been doing it with. And, you know, and, and I'll, and I'll leave that there.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Okay.
Mayor, Mayor, um, you know what, because I know this meeting is going long, so I didn't want to, but before I make my decision, um, it's just something that's just not all the way clear to me. Um, I heard Ron say that if there's a way to use both if possible. So he was stating that I guess he had, one of the companies have something that the other doesn't. Is that correct, Ron?
Uh-huh.
Okay, and what was that, just, just so I know?
Antibody, antibody therapy. So, so, so ultimately, here's the power in what we could do, folks. I'm not sure where they, where they get their solutions and, uh, where they get the materials for their treatments. One of the worst things that's happening in the black community, in the black community is that black folks are, are donating antibodies that are not being used in their own community. This could possibly be a way of stem, of, of stemming that and preventing that to some degree. We can identify those people who need, who need treatments. And if those treatments are covered, uh, by those folks, then I think that would be the best synergy because then we have identification of the people who have COVID and those, and getting people treated to do so. So I'll say this, folks. Within the one point five million dollars that you have, you have the wherewithal and you have the funds to do so. In addition to what we, to, to the discussion that we've had now, there's federal funds under the FCC under what's called the E-Rate Program. I just looked earlier, the Dalton, uh, school system, or no, the Dalton library system has ninety-four thousand dollars that is uncollected. This is something that we can talk, that I can talk specifically about your, about with your grants manager. And here's the additional value that we bring. In addition to that, of the fifteen educational entities in the city of Dalton, approximately twelve or thirteen have no funding history. And they're missing out on hundreds of thousands of dollars as well as the Village of Dalton. So there are additional federal funds, uh, for community-based organizations and the municipality that we can apply for because we don't just want free. And I don't want to offend anybody, but when we get our hair done, I'm bald, I can't say that one. Uh, but when we go to restaurants, when we go do all the things that we want in life, look, you get what you pay for sometimes. And that's what those funds are there for, for public safety. And that's, that's what we can help you with as a partner. Is there a way for both companies to participate? Absolutely yes. And I think that might be a smart discussion to actually have.
Got you, so I guess my, my question is, because we, and because we have a matter of, um, free and then we have a matter of using funds, I guess I'm wondering in regards to the antibody therapy, since you said that you have, that you offer this service and the other company does not.
I'm sorry, the other company does, we, we don't directly do antibody therapy, they indicated that they do.
Got you, okay, that's what I was wondering, okay. Okay, got you, okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just have a comment, this Trustee Holmes.
Sure, go ahead, Trustee.
Yeah, I thought, you know what, is listening and, uh, did a little research, I think we should, uh, reevaluate, evaluate. Because to me, I'm almost with everybody else, it seems like, one, to me, is in it for the money. That's gonna be flat-out honest. And two, I'm, I'm listening to Ron and it's more like it's about the health of the citizens and saving lives. Because one thing he stated that, you know, with other symptoms that may come up and they can work with people who have other symptoms that may come up besides COVID. You know, that's, that's just, um, eye-catching to me, um, it's about saving lives, not about the dollars.
Absolutely, absolutely. I, I, I could not impress upon, that upon you more, that is our approach. And not even, like I said, the health concerns. Look, folks, please don't be that community that's gonna have hell to pay for little black boys and black girls in eight to ten years or so when we find out what, what has happened to those, um, who had, uh, inadequate educational experience for, for two years or so. The other thing is, please take a look at the percentage of black businesses that are failing. Those are, and these are some specific things that we can target because I've helped, uh, develop plans for the restaurants of, um, of Washington DC. I've done some other consulting, um, for the state of Arizona, for the state of New Mexico as well, as far as building safety. So there's a lot of things that we need to talk about that are beyond testing. But yes, testing needs to be addressed right away. It's about public safety, it's about saving lives, it's about, uh, the health of the community. And I'm gonna be very transparent about number one, what we're charging. Number two, the reimbursements that we get and where that money, and where that money goes.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna say this and then we'll call the row to see what the board of trustees are. Um, I totally agree with everything you just stated. Me, as the mayor here, I support your initiative to better, uh, our community by offering tests right away to the community and them knowing the results right away. I know that you've helped several different people as it relates to coming to their home, you do private visits. And you've always stated that you're for health and I'm for safety. And I can't stress that enough, so I do support, um, what you're stating. And I hope the board of trustees give you a chance and, um, follow, uh, what you're saying and vote to bring you on to the village. I think you will be an asset to Dalton and residents will appreciate you, just like I know some of the trustees do. Uh, also, some of the staff members also appreciate you. So again, thank you for your time, thank you for just coming, um, to Dalton and presenting us with facts and educating us on the do's and don'ts and what's going on as a, a whole in the economy. So thank you.
Thank you, everybody, appreciate, God bless.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so, um, with that being said, Clerk Key, can you call the row as it relates to, um, using him to do testing at the next board meeting?
So this is a motion to move forward?
Yes.
Um, Trustee Steve?
No.
Trustee Norwood?
Not at this time.
Uh, Trustee Belcher? Belcher? Trustee Belcher? Trustee Holmes?
I move forward.
I'm sorry, Belcher? Trustee Brown?
No.
Trustee House?
No, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
I hear you now. Thank you. Uh, motion failed.
Okay, moving on, next on agenda is discussion regarding Resolution Twenty-One dash related to a new businesses as smoke shops and beauty supply stores. So I put this on the agenda because the issue we're having is there's becoming too many of everything in town. And yes, I'm for businesses open up, but the issue we're having is I don't want it to be five or ten smoke shops or five or ten beauty supply stores. So I would like to put a cap on it so that we can move differently and, uh, revitalize our area with things that we truly need, which is sit-down restaurants and also, um, things for tutoring for kids because of the issues that we have now. So I'm opening up to the floor, so you guys can give me your input on what you think, how you feel, so we can, uh, put something in place. Okay, any questions?
Mayor, if I can be recognized?
Sure, go ahead.
One question, Mike, on the smoke shops, and I, I complete agreement with the beauty supply as well. Would this, um, resolution limit from a cigar lounge, from cigar lounges as well?
Well, we put a cap on it, so we, we're not gonna say we don't want it here, it's just how many. Currently, right now, I can answer that, we got one smoke shop in town.
Well, I'm differentiating a cigar lounge from a smoke shop. But is this, is this all encompassing of both or is a smoke shop different than a cigar lounge?
It's different, because one, you can smoke there, the other, they just sell there.
Thank you.
Sure, go ahead, Trustee Belcher?
Yeah, uh, so I guess just for clarification in the wording in the ordinance, it says, uh, limitations on tobacco sales. And then it also says we're, uh, limitations on where they can be located. So when Trustee House has said, um, they're not the same, based on the ordinance, it says, uh, tobacco sales and a cigar lounge would be, uh, tobacco sales.
Where do you see that on the ordinance, because I just want to make sure you're not getting it?
Okay, let me, let me pull, let me pull it up so I can, uh, word, read it verbatim. My house is, uh,
Yeah, I'm gonna say that, uh, um, it's two different issues going on. So the one you're speaking, I think you're, um, merging them both. Trustee Steve's has one, I think that's the one you're speaking of. It has like limitation of where, like how far apart. And then mine is different from the one he stated. So I got Shantae on here, she can explain it.
Yes, I'm looking at, it's on page three of the packet with items W through Z. And it is, uh, the language indicates there it's, is sale, retail of cigarettes, cigars, or tobacco in any form without obtaining a license. This issue, business licenses issued for the sale of tobacco products. So if this, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, uh, sorry, I just wanted to make sure I knew this, what it stated that it was tobacco sales and then it reimbursed it.
Correct, Trustee, it does state, uh, the retail sale. So if the cigar shop, uh, also engages in retail, then it would be included in there. But that's why we're seeking a cap on the number of licenses as opposed to prohibiting the, the activity altogether.
Any more questions?
Yes, um, maybe.
Go ahead.
Our, our hope, uh, that we could, because I had, I had something on the agenda about similar thing, the wording could be off. That's why I wanted our attorney on it, because this is the one that he wrote up for, for us. Uh, so moving forward, if we can somehow merge these two together and be at the best ordinance out that we all agree on, I would like to do that.
We can do that, I can.
I mean, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
So, and Trustee Steve, so they are related. However, the distinction is the ordinance with respect to the business license is a matter that falls purely within the Home Rule Authority of the municipality to regulate businesses. The other ordinance that you all proposed or that you propose have on there is a zoning ordinance. And that's going to require a public hearing and a text amendment to the zoning code. So the reason that we propose to regulate it via the business license route is because you wouldn't have to go through the zoning or text amendment or the zoning process and go through a public hearing and publication of changes to the zoning code for the land use. So it can, they can be done, uh, both together if, if that's the desire, but you don't have to do them both together. Uh, the business license route is the simplified way to address the immediate issue. But the zoning ordinance is a long-term, uh, more long-term solution to regulate where these shops can be located. So there is a slight distinction.
Question, with the business license, is that, is that, is that, uh, is that, uh, strictly a mayor's decision or would that come before the board?
Business licenses will follow your process, uh, and, and I, I don't have the ordinance in front of me to know exactly what that process is. But it ultimately, the mayor does have to sign off, I believe the clerk has to sign off as well. But it will follow whatever the statutory process is.
Okay, I, 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 great, thank you for the information, uh, attorney. And, uh, I'd like, I would like for us to somehow see how we can merge two together, two together and make it work best.
Okay, um, so with that being said, is there a cap that you would like to put on any of these? Um, I could start with the beauty supply stores. I would like to cap it off, where is that? I know we have three total now. Uh unless somebody wants another beauty supply store to come in, then you cap it at four. But I just need to know what direction everybody wants to go.
Mayor, I I need another place for my hair products.
Okay, and then now for the smoke shops. And then I guess we can add the cigar lounges. It's only one in town now. How many would you like to cap it off in?
Mayor, could I ask a question?
Sure.
The uh smoke shop is on in the strip mall right here on King Drive, correct?
Mm-hmm, it is.
Was the facility on Sibley that has the orange sticker now that's across the street from Burger King. What was that?
Um that was a smoke shop as well. So basically, they just went through the formality to open their location. So I won't put their business on here, but yeah, that's what they're doing. A smoke shop there as well.
Okay.
While I'm stating, we need to do something because everybody's coming to town and everybody just popping them up everywhere. And I don't want that to be our look. I want us to be a family oriented type of town. And I wanna get back to those roots and not make it where people just smoking. No.
So are they open or they're not?
They're not open right currently. They're trying to open now. And I did tell them, I wanna talk to the board to see where you guys were as relates to currently opening uh more and more of them because it's about several different people trying to open smoke shops in town.
Okay, one other question, and this is my last question. That uh property that's on the corner of uh Sibley and King Drive, is that guy moving from the strip mall to that property he brought there? Is that the same guy?
It is. He's building from the ground up, correct?
Okay, okay. Thanks.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Um y- yeah, mayor. So what did you all, did we just come? I know you came up with a number, a cap for the beauty supply. I guess I'm just wondering if I missed, do we come up with a a number for the smoke shop, a cap for that or?
So my my suggestion would be to do just two. I wouldn't saturate the market with smoke shops in town. There's plenty of other towns people can go to. Um currently, it is only one now in town, which is on Chicago Road, where Monica King Drive.
Got it. And and mayor, if we decide to move forward with this, how often is this revisited? Like I I guess I'm wondering, let's say next year, we decide, hey, you know, another beauty supply wants to come in town. We wanna, we may wanna consider it as opposed to it being vacant. How often will we, will we revisit it? Is this a decision that we'll make and it'll last up entire four years or, I mean, you know, throughout our duration or? How does that work?
You can be in any ordinance whenever you choose to. Currently, now we're stating, if you vote for this, we're stating that, okay, we had a cap of two. Or we're a cap of three for beauty supply stores. So we're not allowing anymore to come in town at this time. So basically, we wanna try to get all our vacant properties and vacant things and put other things that the town truly need. Like I keep saying, sit-down restaurants. Like we got a ton of daycares. We got a ton of beauty supply stores. Now we wanna have a ton of smoke shops. So that's what I'm trying to prevent. Us for just having eight smoke shops in town. Because the majority of the time they come in, they pull a permit, and then next thing I know, it's a smoke shop going up. So.
Got you. Okay, and just one last question. I want, I think uh attorney Rains um kinda cleared this up for us, but I just wanna make sure before I vote, make sure I'm clear on this. She stated, i- is it a difference? She said she stated it's a difference in the law between this and the cigar shop. So whatever decision, I guess I'm I I'm wondering, whatever decision I make regarding this, did we say it affects a cigar shop or no?
She's saying that it can be included in it. Um Shante, you could clear it up if I'm saying it wrong. Shante?
I'm here. Sorry, my computer is a little delayed.
So she can give you clarity.
Yes, so it can be, it's 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 the desire of the board. If you wish to include cigar shops, uh we can include them. If you do not wish them to be included, uh they don't have to be. Right now, the language addresses shops that sell at retail any tobacco product. So it would include, as it's written, cigar, uh smoke lounges or any business that sells tobacco products, whether it's for consumption on premises or off premises.
Got it. So we're.
Be considered, I'm sorry.
I guess I'm just wondering, so as of now, with the way it's written up, we're stating that the cigar shop would be a part of it, but we can always change it?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So will we, let's just say we move forward. Would this be something that we could change at that moment when we vote on it or prior to voting? Um or I guess I'm wondering, because the language, you're saying it's just, it's up to the board to choose at some point, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. I guess we can figure it out. All right, thanks.
Yeah, before you go, can I, let me get a flow to trustee Varan. Do you?
Oh, no, I was just saying the same thing. Um trustee Norwood sort of answered it. So we gonna, if that cigar bar is included, because you're gonna sell, I'm I'm sure you're gonna sell cigars as well. So that's the sale of tobacco that'll also be included, like a smoke shop as well, correct? One, you're selling the items. The other, you can sit in there and smoke.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, so that will be considered as three if we vote on instead of two. Am I correct or no?
On on who's? Who's you, who's you speaking of?
You got two smoke shops.
Have one. Add another one if you want more than two.
So would the cigar bar be included in that number? I know we got, we have two. Okay.
It's gonna be three, so it'll be three.
Okay, okay.
And mayor, if I can, um I would like, I'm okay with the moratorium on smoke shops, but I would ask that we uh separate cigar bar or make some, do some wording that distinguishes a smoke shop from a cigar lounge uh to allow for the, for the use of both.
That's fine. So are you okay with the number she, uh three?
Uh yes, yes, I just wanna have the wording clear that a a smoke shop is a smoke shop. A cigar lounge is a cigar lounge, and the cigar lounge can uh sell the product and sell their product, and the smoke shop can sell their product. But I wanna make sure those two are clearly distinguished and that the smoke shop is what I'm voting on a the moratorium law.
Okay, so attorney um Welch, make sure you clear that up for them. And then also add the cap at three, and then it's already capped at three for the beauty supply stores. If you could, some type of way, uh include Ed Steve's ordinance, because he said you want them to coexist. So if you can make them, want ordinance to make it make sense.
Okay, and then I I will just follow up. Uh trustee House, I can give you a call just to discuss further the the language and make sure I understand the intent to separate these two, so we can talk uh separately.
Question, question I got is, is that, maybe recognize, sorry.
Sure.
Uh are we, so we're saying, we we already got one. You got two, one already coming, and we're okay with one more. You want, you said we're okay with three, with three smoke shops?
Correct.
I I I I would say two. I mean, because there's such a, there's such a, I'm gonna have to CBD or you to bait, you know. I I agree, I agree, maybe, maybe uh two, but three, three is a, three is a lot. One is a lot. You know what I mean? Because you have one, you know me, uh uh um that's covering all of Dalton. If you have a whole nother one, I don't know how they compete when, I mean, you know, with with the stuff they're selling. So I would say one to two, not three.
Okay, well, I agree with you on that because I don't wanna saturate the market with just smoke shops. So that's the reason for the ordinance. So I'm okay with two as well, so I agree, trustee. Are you okay, trustee House with two?
Oh, trustee Steve just intimidated me, so yes, I'm okay with.
Okay, okay. Anybody else? Anybody else got any more?
Can I be recognized, mayor? Okay, so I guess where I am um a little confused with this is based on the language and attorney Welch, please help me. Although we're saying two or three, the way that is interpreted for retail sales of tobacco, they sell tobacco in the gas station. So us saying two or three is kinda contradicting when tobacco sales are being sold daily at gas stations. So can you make me or help me understand um exactly the language of how, and I know that she said that she'll separate like the cigar lounge from the smoke shops, but what was presented to us, uh strict, I mean, it says retail sales of tobacco. So we're saying two or three, where we already have um more than two or three because we have to include gas stations that sell anything, anybody that sells tobacco, retail sale would be included in that. Is that not correct?
Well, they uh they also can qualify for a different type of business license because you do have a general merchandise business license. So there are multiple types of business licenses. It's my understanding that this ordinance was going to be specifically geared towards tobacco, smoke shops, uh et cetera. So the ordinance that you have presented is in very rough skeletal form because without details from the board, I can't really craft a comprehensive ordinance until I know which direction you would like to take.
Okay, so today we're just voting to move it, I mean, getting a consensus to move it forward. But before we actually vote on it, will there be a more immediate uh ordinance to move forward? Because right now, like you said, it's skeletal because it just roughly says tobacco sales. When, of course, currently we have other entities that sell tobacco at retail.
Yes, it will definitely have to be flushed out, and that's one of the conversations that um I will have with trustee House and uh the mayor just to make sure that I hit every T cross and every I dotted.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, concerns?
Yeah, may I be recognized, mayor?
Sure, go ahead, trustee.
Yeah, thank you and um well, coming forward to um put a cap on on these smoke shops. Um what we may need to do is collaborate together to see, you know, once they up and running, how many of them gonna, gonna help us, you know, fund our school system here, fund our park districts, and also um fund some of the seniors here. And at the same time, um get some more developments in here with the public input on it, see what else they would like to see it, see here. I like to sit down restaurant, but also I would like to see input in something that's different that hasn't been indulged before. So thank you all for your input, too.
Thank you, trustee. And I do know that um a young lady is doing a tutoring location next to Bud's Amalabs. She purchased the building and she's doing tutoring to help kids. Uh they've been out for a year, so I thought that was kinda dope. So any other comments, concerns? Okay, if you could, Clark Key, call the row as it relates to moving forward um to the next uh board meeting.
Sure. Trustee Steve?
I, and I I think we can just combine it with mine's, the next, next agenda item.
So we're combining W and X?
Right, we're gonna add his ordinance to this.
So W and X is being combined. Okay. Trustee Norwood?
Let's move forward.
Trustee Belcher? Trustee Holmes?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee House?
Yes.
Motion move forward for items W and X for November the first board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Next on agenda is discussion of possible action regarding ordinance number twenty-one dash amendment ordinance one dash six dash four powers and duties. Trustee House?
Thank you very much. Um this uh this ordinance was put up here, um authorizing um the finance department or department heads to have conversations or to speak with the board members regarding issue or questions that they may have. I will say I put this up here specifically because there are a couple of times that I made phone calls in to department heads and they were instructed that the administration or mayor or administration would not allow for that. Uh most recently, request for the payroll that's been asked for on two occasions via email and no answer. So as it stands right now, we've gone a month and a half to last payroll that I've seen was September first. And wanna make sure we have this information before the next board meeting to be able to vote on it. So I'm asking that we move this forward so that way the department heads have the access to make sure that they're that they speak with the board members to get the information we're looking for.
Okay, well, um I hate to to hear that because I never instructed anybody not to give you any payroll reports. Why would I do that? So um Chris, you're on here, Chris. So we're gonna get it cleared up right now. And this is what I states to you guys all the time. If y'all have an issue or something's not being done, or maybe got just dropped at the wayside for whatever reason, you guys can call my phone and we have to learn how to communicate with each other so that we don't have issues that spill over to the board meeting. Um and we're here to ten fifteen at night because we have so much to discuss. So I would like a different type of approach with my board of trustees. But Chris, can you hear me?
Prior to Chris, I can also say, mayor, you were included on all of this communication as well as village administrator and all attorneys. But I would love to hear from Chris because uh that was one source of my information.
Okay, so um as you guys know, I have a ton of meetings. I normally call y'all, right? Most of the time I pick up the phone and call everybody when I wanna talk to you about something, just so that my emails don't get overlooked that I sent to the board. Uh whether you pick up or not, that's really at your discretion. What I'm asking though is moving forward, we all used to talk. Everyone has each other's number. If y'all have a problem with something or something's not being done correctly as relates to staff here at the village of Dalton, please call me. I've said this at several meetings. I'm saying it again. Call my phone so we can get it rectified. So we don't have to sit here at a board meeting and go back and forth over who said what, who ain't do what, what email came through. Because right now, the community wanna see us unified. They don't wanna see us divided. They don't wanna see any of the turmoil that most people have. So Chris, I am directing him, and this is me publicly saying it because I said it before. Anything that the board of trustees would like or need as relates to finances or financials, please deliver it. Please give it to them via email. So you have a paper trail stating you did give it to them. I know a lot of them come in and they say, give it to them in their hand, but give it to them through email. So now you have a paper trail to cover your butt as well. But as relates to uh payroll reports or any financials when it relates to a warrant list, I've always directed people to give information because that's what you vote on. I too was a trustee. And with that being said, I've always gotten the information, so why would I not give it to you guys now? So that's the direction. Um any other questions or concerns?
Um I thought Chris was gonna elaborate on that because I wanna make sure that I'm completely understanding because I'm here, I went, which is also why I prefer the email, so that way there is a documented communication. Um I'm not here to lie on anybody else, not only the mayor, Chris, anybody. That I um had these concerns, I spoke about them privately, but I mean, trying to email this was documented. And I would like, I would love for Chris to kinda uh tell me, am I crazy when we spoke or what?
Told you that I said you couldn't have it? Is that what you're stating now or what are you saying? I didn't get the question. Okay, Chris, come on on.
Okay, so last time we spoke about this, it was my understanding that the board to run these through you, these payroll reports that basically are the earnings from each payroll and the differences between last pay, last payroll and current payroll and the subsequent report that's attached to that, any new changes in payroll. So any new hires, any changes in salaries, any of those types of items. Last we spoke, I was to send those, I was to run those through you.
Okay, so Chris, um that's not true as relates to run through me as it relates to payroll reports. I tell you, just like I tell anybody, when anybody come in, ask for certain items, y'all know my phone number, call me and let me know. That's what I've told anybody that works here for me. So what I'm saying to you with a payroll report, why would I need you to give me the payroll report for the staff? Why would I need that? I don't need that. I got the same information that you're giving to the board. Why would I have to give you the okay to say, give them the payroll report or give them the warrant list? All those items, I've always told you to give it to them. Even when you told me that Jason came in and asked for it, I told you to what? Give it to him. So let's get it clear for the record since we're talking about it. So I don't have to lie about anything like that. That's why I'm saying it verbally on my mouth to the board and you, Chris. Give them whatever they want or need so that no one's going behind my back saying that I said something that I did not say. Because what am I gonna do with a payroll report? What would be the reason for me keeping the payroll report from the board of trustees? And not only that, you have your personal finance. So all the lives need to stop. That's why I keep saying to the board of trustees, call my phone. That's why I say that all the time. Because people will lie. People will say anything to save themselves. So just call me. That's it, and we can clear it up. So now it is clear. Uh Clark Key, can you please call the? Yeah, go ahead. And just so y'all know, we got one more item and it's ten points. So go ahead.
Okay, that's fine. We we've been here through all this. I am so glad you just stated that uh publicly because I've actually even put in a FOIA and have to receive anything as an elected official. And I also, myself and trustee Norwood, has been on the phone with Chris. And we were directed that we, he had to speak to the mayor. So for you to say that um you haven't said it, I I applaud you that this has been publicly known because the conversations that we've had in trying to get items that uh we want to verify before we make informed decisions has not been um provided to us. So uh thank you for saying that and hopefully. And hopefully the information that is being requested is provided to us and provided to us in a timely matter, especially if it's something that we have to vote on. Because myself and trustee Norwood have experienced that Chris stated it had to be emailed and I guess ran through you before it can come to us and we have not, still have not received items.
Okay, so I know, again, nothing about that. And I just said it, I'm saying it again for you. I just said, call my phone if you had a problem, trustee Belcher. So obviously it wasn't a big enough problem for you to call the mayor to get it addressed. So as it relates to the foias, I'm not over foias. So let's get it clear when everybody keep putting stuff out there. The mayor don't do foias, I don't respond to a foyer. That's the clerk's office. So if it's something you did not get, you need to contact her office to make sure you get that item. As it relates to financials, again, I just stated that and I'm saying it again, any financial information that you guys want, you can receive. I'm not the holding to it. I'm not holding it up. It is for everyone. Even community can basically foyer financials here in the village of Dalton and get the information. So that's why I'm saying to you again publicly, I didn't say that. That's untrue as it relates to you guys getting information. And I just told Chris to give y'all the information that y'all need. So if it's something you need, make sure you get it from him. But I will say this and add this to it. You guys do not run day-to-day operations. As it relates to going into people departments or interrupting their work schedule, you guys have to stop doing that and make sure that y'all either send them an email so that they can oblige to whatever it is that some of you guys go and request them of. So just make sure we can keep that in line. Then it's fine. I have no issues. Anyone?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Hold on. Thank you so much, mayor. And in reference, just to clear up the foyer situation, the only reason I foyered it is because I wasn't able to get it. So I'm a resident before an elected official. So that was the only reason. So I understand that you're not over the clerk's office. But I just wanted to be clear on why I did that. Because I tried to obtain it as being elected official to make an informed decision and wasn't given the information. So that's the only reason that was done. So I just want to be very clear on that, okay? But thank you so much.
Right, but you just stated that you foyered something and didn't get it. And what I'm saying to you, if you didn't get it, I got nothing to do with foias or whatever information come back from the foyer officer, which is the clerk. So I'm just making sure that's clear. Because I get blamed for everything and I'm not over her area. Okay, anyone else?
Yes.
Trustee Steve?
Okay, oh, so I just want to make it clear, Chris, so.
Who's that? Meet your phones, whoever that is.
All right, so let me make this very clear. Chris, you will give the payroll reports that we haven't received about a month and a half. The trustee House said we'll get them tomorrow?
I have Zoom trainings in the morning for the new software, but by the afternoon, I do have a break in between. So by the afternoon, at the latest, you should have the last few payroll reports.
And then you said payroll's in a month and a half. I think he just said y'all didn't get it over a week, right, trustee House?
No, I haven't. I got one since September first. The August twenty-seventh payroll was the last one, which is the entire month of, the entire month of September as well as the early one in October.
Okay, so you do know mine ever, right?
You were on the emails. And I'll say this because there is a lot of back and forth. I included it via email and not only yourself, Chris, administrator, all attorneys. Because we get in here and then everything goes different. I wish it didn't, but it does. So I would rather, and also as you mentioned, to not be intrusive on the employees' work. So I'm not trying to be difficult and I really wasn't gonna chime in again, but I will say all of this was done via email.
Okay, so again, I'm gonna keep saying it. Y'all call me if y'all got an issue. Go ahead. Trustee Norwood, and then we're gonna call the row.
Yeah, ma'am. I was just gonna state that I'm glad that moving forward, Chris stated that he'll be able to assist us because there was a moment where I was quite frustrated when I was going over the warrant list. And I had a question and I did have trustee Belcher on the phone and we called Chris, but we weren't provided with the information because we were told that we had to, for whatever reason, we had to go through you to get the information instead. So I just, hopefully, thankfully, he just stated move before we won't have any issues receiving payroll and that he'll be able to answer our questions. So thank you, Chris, and thank you, mayor.
No problem. Okay, can you call the row to move forward to the next agenda?
Oh, we're moving forward to, I just want to be clear what we're moving forward on. Are we moving forward?
One six four.
Ordinance one six four, powers and duties. Okay, trustee Steve?
Yes, aye.
Trustee Norwood?
Yes.
Trustee Belcher?
Aye.
Trustee Holmes?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee House?
Yes.
Motion passed to move forward on ordinance amending one dash six dash four, powers and duties.
Next on agenda Z, yes, we're finally done. Okay. This ordinance is discussion of possible action regarding ordinance number twenty-one dash related to no cash bids. So as you know, I am really big on trying to put the vacant properties back on the tax road. I've been talking about this while I ran for office, when I got in office, when I got sworn in for mayor. Right now is the time to do the no cash bid. What this entails is us going after our vacant property here in town. It's vacant and it's through the scavenger sale. The scavenger sale is the place where you would do a no cash bid, where you can go in and get the property, say you got tax buyers there and they're trying to bid on the property. Our power, my power as mayor can go in and say, no, we're gonna stop that. We're gonna put that parcel under the village. Therefore, turning, turn around and selling that property to whoever the board and I choose. What I'm saying to you is that we need to get on top of this now because this week is the deadline to actually put in the properties and move forward with the no cash bid. We have to do a special board meeting in order to vote for no cash bids to basically be included in the process. And then we will basically know come when he just said to me, next year of twenty twenty twenty-two, if we got the properties or not. But these are strictly our vacant homes. This is nobody's house that lives in it now. Unless you're a squatter and you're in a vacant house, but no one that lives in the property, properties is the ones we're going after. Some will be commercial and some will be residential. I know I've heard the attorneys working on all vacant properties in town now to see what it is we can go out there and what we cannot go out there. Every property that's on the scavenger list, we cannot go out there or we refuse to go out there because it is occupied by residents who's just losing their property to back taxes. So basically, we're open for questions as it relates to the no cash bid process.
I got a question. Is there, is there a pen of inquiry list already established? To go after? And if there, or is there, is there a list already?
Basically, what I told them to do is go after all the vacant properties. So we've been taking research for each property here in town that's vacant. And basically that list is what the attorneys have been going off.
Okay, the only, only, only suggestion, I mean, I would like to have is that whatever, if the board decides to move forward with this, is that we have some oversight or some, some input. I want to see the list that they're actually going after. I would like to see that.
Okay. Any more input?
Yeah, yeah, mayor. I guess that's my only concern. I do believe, I know that we need to obtain some of these properties and that's the goal. But I guess I'm just wondering, I just want to make sure that with us and this vote, we move forward, that the board will be notified and that the board will be properly informed. So I'm just wondering how would that work?
So you say you want to be informed? Repeat that question, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. So I'm just wondering, would there be transparency in regards to the process? So I'm just wondering, when you obtain the properties, I know if we move forward, we're giving you access or authority to go ahead and obtain the properties. I guess I'm wondering, I guess my concern is I don't want it to be a matter of me approving this or me moving forward with this and then at some point I don't know about the houses being obtained. So I guess I'm just wondering, if I move forward with this, will there be transparency in regards to the board knowing, having knowledge in regards to what homes was obtained through this process?
Okay, so number one, yes, I'm totally with transparency on everything I do here in the village of Dalton. I'm not gonna do anything with the properties. If I got it for the village, it goes to the village. It's deeded to the village name, not Tiffany Hendy. So that's number one. Number two, once we get the list, which they're trying to do now, because we gotta have a special board meeting this week to approve it because the deadline is Thursday, I believe. Dorothy, what did you tell me, Thursday? Thursday, we gotta do a special board meeting in order to be considered anyway for the no cash bid. So once they give me a list of all the properties, I will give it to the board and then the board y'all can decide whether you want to go after them or not. I do think we should go after all vacant properties that we can go out there and obtain them under the village and then you could just easily resell them back to the community. I want to leave no stone unturned because right now we need to put it back on the tax road.
Mayor, all the properties are gonna be in the ordinance that would have to be at the special board meeting. They'll have to be listed, trustee Norwood.
Got you. So I got a, I guess my question is, it sounds like something that at some point, so I know that there's a deadline for Thursday for us to make this decision, which means, you know, we gotta hurry. But I guess I'm wondering, after we start the process, is this something that will ultimately be discussed in the housing committee? Would this at some point go there? And is that how we will move forward?
Yes, that's something definitely we'll discuss as a committee of the whole in the housing committee as well. But my concern is the timing, because if we don't do anything, we miss that window as it relates to scavenger sale. So we can't watch the properties for back taxes. So we will be out of that. So we have to go with the old-fashioned way. Hire an attorney, have them go after anything that's vacant. We have to do all of that. And just for the record, we won't get these properties until, I think he said, March, like twenty twenty-two. It'd be next year. So this is just us being pre-active because it won't happen until next year when we will actually receive the properties. I do know that the county board has to vote on it and they go through their process. That's November. November fourth is their actual board meeting. That's why we show strap for time.
Got you, okay.
May I speak? I'm sorry, because you guys are mentioning a special board meeting on Thursday and I will be out of town as of tomorrow. I won't be back for Thursday board meeting. So I just wanted to let you guys know because I know you need the clerk to carry the vote.
We'll get someone to sit in to do the minutes.
Okay.
Before, if you're not.
And then take the vote. Okay, sure.
Yep, thank you.
Sure. Question I got is that, how, maybe this is a Dorothy Brown question. How long did we know about this?
We've been knowing about, it's not a Dorothy Brown question. I can answer that. We've been knowing about this for a while. If you pay attention to my reports and things that I always speak of, I've been speaking about scavenger sale, no cash bids forever for the last four months that I've been here. I've been talking about it. But now we're at the process of actually trying to obtain stuff. We didn't have any properties or anything to like report or give to anyone because we knew, we knew nothing. So right now, I'm still waiting now for the attorney to tell me which properties we can go out there, which ones we can't. So all they have is the vacant property list that normally like code enforcement or police officers, anybody driving around the town and they write a list of the vacants. That's what they have. And that's the ones that they're going off of. So now they gonna come back and say, mayor, we can go off this, so you can go off that.
Yeah, I feel you. I was gonna, you say, we've been talking about that. I'm just saying, this could have been, is not, it's pressured. Oh, we gotta hurry up and do it. We got a special board meeting. If this has been known about, we could have done this a month ago, month or so ago. Or could have been put up for discussion a month or so ago. Versus now, when we gotta do it now and now, and now it's a rush on it now. And the second question is, the properties that are taxed, don't they all have a redemption time to get it all, to get them back if they redeem the property?
Certain ones do. That's why the attorney's doing the research to tell us which ones we can and which ones we cannot. So all of them you can't take. That's why I'm making the statement I'm making. So once they tell us clarity, yes or no for which items or which properties or parcels, they're not gonna let the board know, okay, this is the findings that the attorney said that we can do. And then none of addresses or parcels we will go after.
Okay, I just like moving forward, please. If you knew about this, you said you knew about this.
We've been talking, I've been talking about this.
Yeah, but we could have talked about this earlier and they voted on it and been more prepared. Now it's the last minute, we're discussing it to vote on it. Last month.
Okay, so let me respond. We don't have any properties to vote on. Discuss it if I don't have a house. I don't have nothing yet.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the cash bid process that we're voting on now. We're not voting on no properties. We're doing this cash bid process now because the tax sale's coming up. If this has been known two, three months ago, then we could have talked this cash bid process two, three months ago. Now, as we're talking about now, because November fourth is right around the corner. That's all I'm saying. I'm not talking about no properties. There is no properties right now. But the cash bids process, we have to vote on it now to get the properties.
Correct. Okay, any other questions? Any other concerns? Okay, clerk key, can you call the row to a consensus to move forward? But just so you guys know, we have to do a special meeting. So I can't say to move it to the November meeting. It will be this week, Thursday.
For a special meeting.
A special meeting to say, yes, we want to do the no cash bid process with the county. And there's one of our vacant properties that's old for back taxes and that will be the process.
So the state's date is the twenty-first, October twenty-first. I just looked it up.
Okay.
Okay, so motion to move forward to a special board meeting on October the twenty-first for the no bid, no cash bid process. Trustee Steve?
I'm just saying, no, I'm not okay with that. No, it's just too, too, no, no.
Trustee Norwood?
No.
Trustee Belcher?
No.
Trustee Holmes?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
No.
Trustee House?
No.
Okay.
Motion fails.
Motion fails, but I just want y'all to be aware of what y'all are doing. Maybe y'all will reconsider it. That means that we will have to go another route of obtaining properties for the village. My goal was to basically put these properties back on the tax road. They've been sitting there. They've been a blight to our community forever, for eight years that I've been trustee. And right now we had the opportunity to actually do something about it, do something good for community and give it back to the people of the community. So by you just saying no and not even considering all the options and the things that we could actually do to rebuild on and make Dalton better again, I just think that was slap in the residents' face. And you guys should go to the drawing board and rethink about that. Moving on to mayor's report and I'll be brief. What time is it? Ooh, ten thirty-six. So I'm just announcing a couple upcoming events and things that we have. One thing that I was just so heartbroken about was to hear that Dixmoor was without water. So today what I decided to do was send them pallets of water. I got tow companies to come out, JTS and West Towing. They came out and bought pallets of waters to Dixmoor along with Public Works. So thank you again, State's Corral and the Public Works team. And they helped them become whole again. So when we got there, we unloaded the trucks and we gave them water because they was really, really short. So if anybody is watching this and you have a heart for people, please just go over to Dixmoor and give Mayor Fitzgerald a warm hug and some love over there because they definitely need water. It reminds me of the Flint, Michigan situation and who are we to sit here and just ignore the people around us? If we have it, you guys, let's give it up to other communities as well. A lot of time people don't partner with one another and they just let people fall at the wayside. But again, Fitzgerald, not on my watch. I won't let you fall, buddy. You are a mayor over there. And if anything you need from Dalton, my hand is extended to you. My services over here in Dalton is extended to you. So whatever you need, anytime, call my phone. Who's on the phone? Eleven, twelve o'clock at night, trying to get this situated for them. So again, the address at Dixmoor's Village Hall is one seventy west, one hundred forty-fifth street. Again, that address is one seventy west, one hundred forty-fifth street. Next, I've always announced here and at all upcoming meetings and future meetings. And when I do this, when I first got in office, one of my campaign promises was to make sure I fix the alleys, fix the streets and fix sidewalks. Currently now we are doing all the above. So if you are watching this, residents, please send in your alley, your street or your sidewalk and we will make sure that we add you to the next list. I know round two have, no, round one have already been approved and they should be pouring concrete soon. So I just want to reiterate that, residents, if you have these issues, please let us know because we won't be able to help you or we missed you. I don't want you to be upset saying that we didn't add you to the list. Add your alley, your street or your sidewalk. That's what we currently doing. Next, this Saturday, October twenty-third, I am hosting my annual breast cancer and domestic violence awareness walk. I do this every single year. I am basically really strong-headed when it comes to that breast cancer. My mom is a breast cancer survivor and I always try to stress to the young women, especially the young women, of how to do a breast examination and how to find a lump in your breasts. If you do not do it, ladies, I'm saying this, I'm telling you from experience, you will just go and think it's nothing and it's really something. So you need to do it. You raise the arm and then you rub and you feel for the lump and you check your lymph nodes as well. So people that don't know what I'm talking about, ask your parent or a loved one or someone close to you to show you how to do it. Or when you go to the OB-GYN doctor, they can show you how to. Or when you go to the OB-GYN doctor, they can show you how to do it as well. But hey, I am real big on awareness and making sure you find early detection because that would save your life in pain and suffering because that's, that's tough and it was tough for me and my family. So again, breast cancer and domestic violence awareness walk will be this Saturday. So all women of all walks of life, please come out and join us and support Dalton in this movement. Going down Sibley, starting at ten a.m. will be registration. Eleven a.m., we will walk and march down Sibley with our pink pride on. So make sure you're not pink from, from Secret ladies, white your pink shirt, white your bows. Make sure you represent for all women across the nation. Next, I know a lot of people are looking for employment. Yeah, I'm saying it, even though I know y'all not. But a lot of people quitting their jobs. Y'all stop quitting them jobs because y'all need jobs. But I am hosting a job fair. It should be Saturday, October thirtieth. I am currently now looking for a location because the weather's shifting. We was supposed to have it at Melly Fitness in the parking lot. But right now, I am trying to partner with Thorn Ridge High School. And it was supposed to be a weekday, a weekend, no, weekday, but it's gonna be the weekend, which will be that Saturday. So I want to make sure that you guys understand that come and get these jobs. It's gonna be great vendors there, people that really want to put Dalton back to work. A lot of them have vowed to give Dalton first shot at any of the positions. I did say that I have the railroad that will be out there. So people, don't go for that job if you don't want to work. And I'm saying it as blunt as I can. Do not go for a railroad job if you don't want to work because those jobs to me are career jobs. Those jobs are jobs that's hard to get in and I'm gonna open the door for you to get in, just to walk through. So basically, when you get there, try to stay there. People care about y'all being on time, don't be late and make a career out of it. They pay really well. Ian is right in your hometown, in your backyard. So again, the railroad will be there, Amazon. And then we have a lot of other big companies that will be there. Amazon, real, really strict on timing, on you showing up to work on time. So I know a lot of people that worked there and just got fired because they didn't come to work on time. So just make sure you take that into consideration. Parents, all my parents, I've heard your cries. I know you guys were speaking of Halloween and you were scared due to COVID. So what I've decided to do is have a Halloween trunk or treat party for you here at Village Hall. No, the inside of Village Hall is not open, but outside is. So it's really like a pull-up, right? So you just pull up and you get out the car and you walk around to the different vehicles who will have their trunks decorated with Halloween stuff and a bunch of candy and your kids can go and get everything they need. Then we have a photo booth, we have pumpkins. We got all kinds of different creative things for you for that evening. This will start, what is the time? What time is the Halloween? Let me see that. Hold on one second, I'm gonna tell you the time right now. Halloween will start at two p.m. It is two p.m. to five p.m. here at Village Hall. So if anybody interested, please let them know. They don't have to worry about safety of going to anyone's home to get candy because due to COVID, because you never know who has it. So please come to Village Hall and get your candy. We will have things already pre-wrapped, pre-in bags. And then also, you have people just give a bunch of candy. So man, I don't know how y'all gonna do it because my daughter, I takes her candy because it's too fairy. We, we don't need that right now. Next, I am very excited because we won the Come Well Edison Powering the Holidays Grant Competition. Yay! I know y'all happy, but I'm happy, yay! So we won that and they only awarded ten grants. And of the ten grants, four hundred municipalities participated and we was one of the winners. That means that we will, we will be providing twenty-five-hundred dollars grant money for the holiday lights for the village. So we're gonna light up the town, guys. So when you see us putting in on trees, we gonna do a tree ceremony lighting and other things. But we gotta make sure we win the competition again and make sure we beautify Dalton. Next is the holiday decoration competition for all the homes in Dalton. I will be announcing this coming up, so please get prepared. The judging will take place on Sunday, December twelfth, through Friday, December seventeenth. And the winners will be first place, second place and third place will be announced on Saturday, December eighteenth. So please get your decorations together and make sure you register to, so we can come and judge your house, your Christmas lights. And I don't know who didn't like driving around in the winter and looking at Christmas lights. I know that I've always did it as a kid. We used to go to other towns. It was really cool and fun. So I want to bring that same feeling back to Dalton for why we actually moved out here to the suburbs because the suburbs was just where it was at. So I want our kids and our future, our future kids to see what we could be. Next, Village Hall looks great. I'm proud to announce that we have done the parking lot. We've done landscaping and also have done the roofs and now we're fixing the sidewalks. So I'm trying to make sure we bring that downtown feel to you. And I've always stated this and I say it again, you can't go talk about somebody else's home when your home not in order. So right now, I'm trying to get our home in order and y'all know how us women, how we gonna clean it up. We gonna beautify, we gonna make it look like something somebody want it. So here we are, when y'all come to Village Hall, you'll see all the beautification items and projects that we have completed. So I'm very proud to announce that. Last but not least, I want to announce that, to bring to your attention about the Airbnbs, Airbnbs. I am against Airbnbs here in the village of Dalton. The Board of Trustees are against Airbnbs in Dalton. I know that we have an ordinance that says that we do not allow them here in Dalton. So I'm stating this as a whole, as, as the board. If you're caught doing this, you can be in jeopardy of losing your home, you may be in jeopardy of getting tickets. It's all kinds of concerns that we have with that. I know that Chief Collins have hinted and spoke on this several times. I'm just making sure that you guys know that you do not want to rent out a house to anybody. We have had complaints on several homes. We have done different things as relates to those issues. But what I don't want to see is people coming into town and just having parties because that's what they've been doing. They'll come rent the Airbnb out and then they'll turn it into a party night for the day. And then the next day, you got bottles, condoms, all kinds of stuff scattered amongst our community. And then the residents are very upset with that, especially the quiet blocks. And that's the blocks they're being on. So if you see some, say some. Again, no Airbnbs in town. So if you see them doing it, report it. Call Chief Collins and let him know and then we will deal with it accordingly. Next, I'm still looking forward to block-by-block housing program.